New construction should reinforce the architectural style of existing buildings in terms of building size, siding material, texture, color, bulk. So I'm gonna defer to Ms. Gleason. Do we think it meets that criteria? That's the only design standard for the Village District.
I think that the way it meets the ground is not the Village.
You can have a whole hill there, too.
It is. Right. You're gonna be traveling upward, which means during snow season and ice season, people are gonna be sliding out of that driveway onto Main Street.
So we have a concern...
A safety concern?
Well, regarding 732, it doesn't really conform to the design standards as we understand it for the Wareham Village District.
What they're gonna do for ice melt in the wintertime. So there's gonna be a sheet of ice right across the road. These is all coming down. Water used to run downhill, but it's not right.
So this is not a cluster development, is it, Ken?
No, it's not. It doesn't have enough acreage.
What about multiple family, 820? Multiple family and apartment dwellings? Does this fall under 820? For occupancy by two or more families living independently of each other. So two families, a duplex, falls under that criteria, correct?
It would fall under that criteria of 820, yes.
Okay, so does each unit have 650 square... Jane, I'm gonna defer to you again. 650 square feet of livable floor area?
Um, I think they do a...
It's 22 by...
22 by 26. Yeah, but a bunch of that, well, yeah.
That has to exclude...
22 by 26, yeah, and it's two floors.
Closets and bathrooms.
Oh, gosh, yeah, I'd have to really look at that. And I'm assuming it leaves out the stairs, too.
And which zoning district is this in, Ken?
WV1.
Oh, that's right, it's not...
It's 572 feet by the footprint, so that's all...
But it's two floors. So, I know you gotta take some out, but...
It's okay, it's probably gonna meet that.
Yep.
Development standards, dwellings shall be connected to the municipal sewer, yes?
Well, that was my other question, is I was on the impression there was a moratorium on sewer connections. So how did this take place?
I thought the moratorium was raised, or released, or lifted.
They lifted it?
Okay, next one to you, Ms. Gleason. 825, windows in habitable rooms shall be set back at least seven feet from any side or rear lot line they face.
25 feet, is that what it said?
Seven, seven feet.
Say that again, windows?
Windows in habitable rooms shall be set back at least seven feet from any side or rear lot line.
We're at 10 feet because of the zoning setback, so that's fine.
Public amenities shall provide plantings, uh... Screening of waste disposal receptacles?
Yeah, that's on a fence, then.
Sidewalk improvements?
I didn't see any sidewalks.
No sidewalks.
Handicap parking and access?
I didn't see nothing.
So it doesn't seem to comply with all of the requirements of 825.3. So, I mean, these are all things that they're gonna have to get variances on. 827.1, compatible with adjacent land use. 827.2, which is the one I submitted, does not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. So I'm concerned about egress onto Main Street, particularly across from the CBS.
So with regard to ADA, these are not public buildings? These are not buildings that the public would enter into?
I didn't say anything about ADA, though. These are bylaws.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I said adjacent land, not ADA.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at the handicap parking and access, or AAB. Massachusetts, right.
Well, it says that it has to have handicap parking. That was not an ADA requirement, that was a...
And it would, and we're in Massachusetts, it would be AAB, but not ADA, but anyway.
So there is no...
It actually would be whichever is more...
There is no indication, because there is no visitor parking.
Is that what...
There's none. No, these are the two per...
Wow.
None of this is identified as visible. So there's absolutely zero visitor parking, which means you're gonna have people parking here...
Yeah, and you've got no sidewalks.
And here, and then here. And there's no sidewalks anywhere.
Yeah, there's no access to the... To the door, into the...
Okay, two-family dwelling, two per dwelling unit, meets that.
What's the elevation difference between Main Street and here?
I took the curves at grade explain. No, that's insurance. So there's twenty.
It's a... It's a steep slope, 10 feet over 30 feet, 40 feet?
There's two or two, so it's 40 feet. On the floor, it's a 25, a 25 percent pitch?
18 feet on Main Street. So you have a five-foot rise just getting to the top of the driveway. And that would be my concern. When I lived on the Cape, I've had a very steep pitch at the end of my driveway, and I would literally slide out onto Long Island during the winter.
Is this all...
I think that's...
Because they're looking for a sewer hook up, though.
Well, this says, this says a leaching field.
Yeah, because that could be...
It has to have a sewer hook up by the bylaw, so that'll be another variance. You know if they're planning to connect to town sewer, Ken?
Yeah, it's listed on...
Yeah, they have town sewer shown on the plans.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, you said leach field, then?
I think that was...
Well, they do, it does show a leach field.
That's for drainings.
Sike drain.
Oh, sike drain.
Yeah.
Boatload of...
Basins.
Pavements.
Yeah.
So your comments on this are that it doesn't conform to Section 820? That the traffic is an impact that is unacceptable?
Well, it's a concern.
A concern.
Concern, yeah.
That the, it's too tight.
I, yeah, I'm looking for the file to see if the fire department has signed off for access.
The layout, was there a truck radius?
Jane, so...
There's nothing.
On that locust, how far is the driveway, centerline of the driveway, over to Chapel?
Over to where?
Chapel, like, you should be able to calculate this roughly.
Well, here's, there's like 120...
85, 100 and...
200.
It's gotta be 100 feet, though.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's well past that.
That was my question.
Yeah, it's well past it.
Yeah. Uh, look at the layout, sometimes what they show.
And there's no parking spaces, so...
There was somewhere that I thought I remember seeing, uh, the truck radius.
Well, I mean, we held Bay Point to a design standard as far as the size of the garage to be considered a two-car garage.
Right.
And theirs was bigger than this. I think they were at 18 by 22. This is 16 by 22. And you know...
There are the truck radius.
Because it's a drive-under, you know there's gonna be a set of stairs to go up into the living space, so there's three feet gone. So now you're talking 16 by 19. You're not putting, you're not putting a pickup truck, you're not putting a Yukon, a Suburban, none of that stuff's going in there.
Wait, what, 16 by 19? They have to be nine and a half by 19 for lots of parking. I don't know if those count as parking, or driveways are not parking spaces, right?
No.
No, but Bay Point, Bay Point tried to count garage space as parking.
I know, and well, there's no, so they can't do that, well, without a variance, they can't do that.
But my concern would be there's absolutely, you've got 14 families living on a piece of property with zero locations for visitors.
And no open space.
What's that? No open space?
Where's all the water going?
Well, they have that retention, but it's...
Do we know about the coverage, the impervious surface? Only on that.
What the percentage is?
Yeah. Got a list of...
How wide is the looping street? If an Amazon, if an Amazon delivery truck shows up for one of these guys, is he gonna block the whole?
Well, here's, here's the fire truck. They do give an emergency egress drone that shows the fire truck maneuvering.
I mean, every other project has had to conform to Wareham 1, the ladder truck. This doesn't specify which truck, just says Wareham fire truck. Could be one of the pickup trucks for all we know.
All right, I, I'm gonna just draw my hands.
You make a good question. How did that plan get that far with that many deficiencies in there?
Well, it's bypassing us completely because of who's submitting it.
Right. The way, the way that it's been handled, it bypasses us altogether, just goes straight to the ZBA.
So all we can do is comment?
Oh, right, we can, we can share our concerns, and then what the ZBA does, that is out of our hands.
Now, the planning board could object if it gets approved.
It could.
We could file...
We could file within the 20-day period, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, there's no, there's no letter in the ZBA's file on this project from the fire department that says they've signed off on access. Just 'cause they've drawn it on the plan doesn't mean the fire department has signed off.
That's correct.
So that would be one concern. Lack of visitor parking would be another concern. Egress onto Main Street would be a concern. No sidewalks, no handicap parking.
Are they handling all the water on that piece?
Sorry?
Are they handling all their own water?
Or is it town water?
No, no, no. It rains.
Yes, they have a...
Is there a leach?
They have a thousand...
There's a lot of leaching field.
It's a 1,000-gallon leaching field, which to me doesn't sound like a ton for as much pavement as is here.
And I had previously, yes, there's no review by our consulting, the town's consulting engineer in the file. There may have been one. Charlie would normally have reviewed a plan like this.
Right.
You know, that goes right against the master plan, you know, if you wanted to use the master plan as a...
That was my other concern, was if you read the master plan...
You know, it's been circumvented so many times, it's becoming, you know, it's happening all the time. People complain, well, we got a master plan, we'd like to see this progress in a certain way. This is, this is garbage.
It's, it's not, you know, if we're trying to, I mean, we've all been blowing our brains out for the last couple of years trying to come up with a plan to revitalize downtown Wareham. Now, just because the first section of it stops shy of this particular property doesn't mean that downtown Wareham isn't downtown Wareham. And this goes against everything we've been discussing when it comes to design standards and look and feel, open space. There's nothing, none of that's there. All it is, is, all right, we've got a, we got a piece of land this big, how many houses do we jam on it?
I think you should have something about open space on there as well, too. Open space for activities.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking to see, if there was something that gave guidance about a play area for kids. These are all two-bedroom.
Article 10...
They're gonna be kids.
Way...
Maybe not in every unit, but...
Which means there's gonna be kids in the road, in the driveway, because there are no sidewalks.
The right bike sound, the problem we got now.
Yeah.
And 10 feet behind the house doesn't constitute a backyard for kids.
And other developers have come in and said, okay, I have this open space for the kids. I have this open space for parking for guests. I have this, and this has nothing.
There's snow removal, I mean, they've got snow removal there, so we got that.
Do the stone walls have any protection in this town?
What's that?
Stone walls. Some towns, ancient stone walls have a lot of, lot of clout.
Yeah.
They're destroying, you know, that wall's getting busted up further up the road.
Break through that wall? Yeah, 'cause now it's 24 foot wide.
Let's do existing access to the site. Walkway, but where do you, you drive to the site?
Oh, surprise.
How do you arrive by car?
And I believe this is exempt from Article 12, right?
From what?
Article 12, because of 1216.9. It's a special permit. We haven't removed that.
That's right.
We haven't removed that clause yet.
That's right.
So all of Article 12...
Hey, you know what, come to think of it, there is no driveway.
So there's no parking in this site? There's no driveway from Main Street?
Should be now.
Yeah, 24 feet wide.
There's the existing conditions. That's a walk. How do you drive to the site?
No, that's the way it exists now.
Yeah, right, but what it's saying...
Yeah, there is no driveway.
Look on the other, okay, split it over another sheet for the...
Yeah, just how do you get to this building with your car?
Well, maybe it wasn't designed, maybe it was designed to park on Main Street. Okay, that's where it was built.
Here we go here. This is Main Street coming right up the front.
Yeah. Right, but existing, I was just curious.
The way it's represented, right, it's totally different, because this is totally awkward, so it throws you off cue when you're looking at it.
I'm just curious how they, like, drive to the house with a load of groceries?
You don't...
They come, right now, they're coming off of High Street to get into that building in the back.
But they don't have any right-of-way? It's just a casual thing? This isn't showing any right-of-way across this map, 61 Lot 2008.
It doesn't show the existing curb cut.
Well, there's property here. No?
No. I believe this is, where does High Street show up on that, Mike?
Yeah, right here. Here's, here's your, here's your driveway.
Yep.
Comes in from High Street. It's not really a driveway, though. It curls to this property, but that's, that's not a driveway.
Like, they're doing work on this building. How are they getting all the construction to go there?
There's a road right in the middle there, well, it's not a road.
From High Street.
Yeah.
So they're, so they're cutting through that stone wall. They've cut in 24 feet of that stone wall.
On Main Street, on the north.
Yeah.
More than 24 feet because it's radiused.
Next, fifth sheet.
That's, that's Jane, we're talking about character now, gone.
There's 24 feet here, so it's...
Yeah, so you're probably talking 28.
At least.
Yeah.
Well, this water's going downhill onto Main Street.
Well, according to their plans, it ends up here, but you're not gonna stop this.
No. That's a bit of a follow-up.
I don't know how you would...
Right like this, and right up the road.
Yeah, drainage, where's the drainage? This is utilities. Grading and drainage.
So you've got the catch basin, the catch basin.
So everything here to here goes this way.
Yeah.
And nothing to stop it.
Water sheets right up... Unless everything's pitched back, unless we have a hall down there, so we can have a something. That's only maybe to direct that water to that hatchet field on the side over there.
Yeah, but you're not even gonna get it to travel back up to these.
Well, the plan says it does. I mean, this is a poor design, it seems like, well, you know, anybody wants to maximize the dollar on these properties they have, you know, it's a little time we put our foot down. We can refer to the master plan.
Well, the master plan is just a guide.
It's a guide, right.
But it's not a...
But that's the will of the people, the people that live...
Recording in progress.
How many, how many kids we gonna get in school in this thing?
Well, that's, okay.
Just say no.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a...
Please.
That the planning board prepare a letter to the planning board of appeals enumerating the concerns that Mr. Buckland captured and Mr. King captured. And as part of the letter, the planning board recommends that the variance...
Be denied.
Site plan, excuse me, site plan and special permit be denied. That's our recommendation.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherri, correct?
You're muted, Sherri.
You're muted?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Okay, so the planning office will prepare that letter and forward it to the ZBA?
That's right. The ZBA by Wednesday.
Perfect.
Okay, are there any, there's several ZBA site plan, special permit, variances. We're only gonna talk about this one today?
This was the only one I had on the, the other ones are far enough out that we can get them on the next, on the next meeting.
All right.
Okay. Discussion on redraft of zoning bylaw articles 14 and 15. And I think you and Sherri are gonna champion this?
That's Sherri and I, yes.
All right.
And I'll, I'll do it kind of quickly. We sent you last week, probably not in time to meet Sam's 12 noon Thursday, but we did get it early Friday morning, so, three documents. Rather than sending you the full text versions of where we're at, which is still a work in progress, we sent you an outline of the Article 15. We sent you an outline of the rules and land use rules and regulations that will support that. And we're coming up with a set of definitions and acronyms and other references that we will incorporate. I sent you that as a working document, as a third, a third item. In general, we're trying to remain consistent to the objectives we reported at our last meeting, but the things we want to achieve are to make, well, clearly the first objective we're trying to achieve is to make clear the distinction between site plan review and special permit, that they're distinct land use permits that are related. But, so we're trying to craft the bylaw so that those are distinct and can be applied individually or in certain cases together. So that is one of our primary objectives. I lost my... Then, in, then the other objective is we're trying to make it more readable, probably less so for the, well, but for anyone who has to read it, but mostly for the members of the town and applicants who are bringing applications before one of the land use boards. So in general, we've restructured the land use permitting article, Article 15. We've moved all the content for Article 14 and combined it with 15. Oh, another objective is we're not, we're trying not to lose any rule or process that we had before. And then the other thing is to separate procedural items into the rules and regulations while keeping the regulatory items in the bylaws. So to that end, we've restructured Article 15. We have a, an administrative or an introduction section, will, you know, describe the purpose in an outline of the document. We'll probably stick the definitions, acronyms, and references to law in the second subsection. The third subsection will define the land use permitting boards, the zoning boards of appeal, how it's established, what powers it has, where it derives its powers from. And in each, under each, the two land use boards, the ability to write rules and regulations. And then talk about fees. So we talked about the ability, currently we have fees to set up a 509 account, but maybe there are other fees and things that we want to impose. And then the select board we referenced does have some land use permitting powers. So we'll reference that. We, in the bylaw, we have a procedure section just talking about how land use permits are determined. We start with the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector issuing a denial for a land use application. The denial should outline where the, where the plan needs to go to one of the boards, either for a special permit, a site plan review, variance. Talks about what are, what are permits are granted in and how they may be combined. So if, if a, if a use requires, in the case we were just going over, a variance, a site plan review, and a special permit, those can be applied for individually or together, so we articulate that. We may need to work on some forms updates, but in general, that's the same that's true today. What was the next thing? There was a clause in the existing bylaws about license approval. We've retained that, that was specifically adopted at one of the town meetings. And we talk about repetitive applications here. Talk about the two-year restriction and a, so we have a process. The next thing is really the land use permitting section. At this time, we're proposing that we implement design review into the bylaw, similar to what we're planning, I think, to do later with...
John.
With John.
Yeah.
So we had an outline for what a design review, it's not necessarily a requirement, but it's a recommended procedure, certainly for complex and larger projects. So it talks about the purpose, the general approach. It talks about a reference to townscape, so some of the issues we were talking about. The design review should address a lot of the issues that we were discussing in the previous agenda item, should be handled all as part of the design review process.
So one, one term that we haven't used before and might apply to that preliminary design review, that it's a tool. And we haven't used the word "tool" that might apply here, that it's not necessarily a guideline, it's not a rule, it's not a regulation, but a tool that's available to applicants.
So Sherri, we might wanna think that a tool is a new defining term.
Right.
Although I think tools are used in the vernacular, I don't know. Anyway, so...
And I know it can have some...
So, yes, we wanted to codify a design review concept, a design review tool. And again, it's, it's, it's... Right now, as we're drafting, it's not a requirement, it's sort of a recommendation.
Right.
But it certainly would take time off the boards and public meetings where we could review some of these questions beforehand. But it addresses all the other bylaws, you know, preservation and enhancement of landscape, open space, signs, stormwater. This is where we were, I was thinking we could start talking about heritage structures, ancient ways, turtles, but, you know, animal, all of that stuff should be clarified and documented up ahead of time, so that we're not constantly sending an applicant back, okay, well, what did you do about ancient ways? What did you do about heritage site? Did you, did you do all the environmental stuff? And make sure it's part of the application package, and those questions can be more quickly answered for the, for the public when an application's submitted.
So we're still talking about the bylaw right now?
The bylaw, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So in the bylaw, I think we would codify, this is what you would do in a design... So in the bylaw, I think we would codify, this is what you would do in the design review, how you do the design review, and some things may end up in the rules and regs.
So that's actually the, the one sort of overarching question that I had as I was reading through this. And that, it didn't jump out to me, maybe that I just missed it, is how you have determined which goes, which information goes in which place.
We're, we're still struggling with that and, and we, we continue to look to Ken, and I send Ken a draft, and he says, "No, that belongs..."
But you almost...
But I don't have...
You almost said a single question that, that will, the answer will tell you where, what you're talking about goes, in which document.
Right, okay.
And I think that, that, once you've figured that out, I think that that should be at the beginning of each of the two documents...
That would, that would be, well, that would, yeah, in the purpose section, right.
So that people are understanding what the difference is between these two.
Right.
Because they work in concert.
Yeah, they, they, they work together, yes.
But I, I know that the major intent here is clarity, so...
Okay. I, I took that Sherri's, you know, we, we're, we're still working on that, but again, at a high level, from my thinking, this is stuff that we want to codify in the law.
Yep, no, it's all good.
And the procedure document is, you know, thou shalt maybe do a design review, that's in the bylaw.
Yeah, and, and I know that...
And then how you do the design review...
And based on some of the conversations we've had, I, I know that, like, ancient ways and some of those items that you just listed, we had nothing to base our conversations about it on.
Right.
So I think having that in the bylaw is probably a good, good idea.
Right. And there are some places in the bylaws that talk about those things, but again, those criteria are subject to interpretation in many cases. So if we deal with some of that and get it organized as part of the design review, that debate doesn't, doesn't have to occur...
Yep.
...in the meeting. And we're certainly not overruling any, any other bylaw. One of the things we're discovering as we do this is, reference to site plan, reference to special permit is woven...
Yeah.
...in a lot of places in the document.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the key overriding, Sherri, if I say something stupid, shout at me, but the key...
Don't worry.
The key starting place for article 15 is really article three. So we can't understand article 15 or the rules and regs without understanding article three...
Yep.
...which is where all land use is, is defined.
Yep.
And we have to record, we're, we're going to have to do work on article three in conjunction with this. So design review, we added.
Yep.
I haven't talked to Ken about this yet, but I dropped a placeholder in for A and R and subdivisions in article 15. Really didn't talk about that before, and I couldn't find it in the bylaws. It's certainly in the rules and regs, but anyway, I, it was a land use decision, so I, I dropped a placeholder in here for those two decisions. The next thing, and then, so then, we broke out special permit and site plan review, and the structure of those two sections mirrored each other. One of the challenges that Sherri and I are going through to make sure we're consistent is in the prior bylaw, site plan review and special permit were inextricably bonded. So anywhere we had a requirement for a site plan review, it was sort of also a requirement for special permit. So as we pull them apart, we're trying to make sure we don't drop any requirement and make sure it applies. It makes sense for a special permit and it makes sense for a site plan review. So right now, the outline structure mirrors paragraph by paragraph, and the wording is fairly similar. So we talk about the purpose, who the granting authorities are. There are some cases where in the previous bylaw, or the current bylaw, I should say, where it calls out, "Okay, this, this board is a special permit granting authority for this. This board is the site plan review authority for that." We know in some cases that's inconsistent with what's in article three. So we're debating, and I haven't, again, talked to Ken about his advice on this, do we want to enumerate those things in the bylaw or refer everything back to article three? Right now, the wording is, you need a site plan review for large-scale ground-mounted solar array. And then there's a clause at the end that says, "If there's something in here that's inconsistent with article three, article three trumps."
Yeah. Yeah, I think that that's, that's something, you know, having, having worked on zoning rewrite decades ago and writing specs and all that kind of stuff, you don't want to duplicate information if you can avoid it. I mean, at all costs, you try not to duplicate because it makes...
And it's inconsistent.
...the job that you're taking on right now really hard. And it makes use of the document really hard.
So we're, we're, we're trying to make sure that we don't miss anything.
I would advocate for all of that information being in article, in section three.
Right, but then...
Article three.
Okay, thank you. That, we, we sort of agree with that. The problem is there's so many other places in the bylaw.
Yeah, that it, yeah, yep.
You, you want to catch all that, that...
Right, right.
Doesn't, doesn't miss anything.
But I, that's, that's what I would advocate for. Maybe it, maybe it doesn't work fully, but if that's a, a goal, I think that's probably a good one.
Thank you.
Well, and I, I would add to that, that, that goal and the redundancy that exists in the, the bylaw, the zoning bylaw today, really emphasizes the job of looking over our drafts, the importance of that job. So when we get our drafts to you to review, everything that you can do to achieve the goal that you've just set out, Jen...
Yep.
...would be most appreciated.
Yep.
Or, or just, what about this? Is it there somewhere, you know?
Yeah, yep.
Is it baked in? Make sure you ask us those questions.
Yeah, yeah.
In, in both the special permit and the site plan review, we, we refer, we create a, a reference to the rules and regs.
Mm-hmm.
So it says the authority, we've already established the authority to create rules and regulations for the land use permitting boards. Now this refers to, go look at the rules and regs.
Yeah, and ultimately, I'd love to see all these rules and regs that we're putting together brought in under an umbrella.
Okay, so that's a question I have when we get to the next...
Okay.
...package or article. So we talked about the procedures. Then we, we, in both, we, we talk about the review criteria and we start for site plan review or special permit, natural features, relation to the environment, pedestrian circulation, vehicle circulation, parking, landscaping, many of the questions we just went through on the previous. So that's in both site plan review and special permit. I, I retained the relation to conservation commission in both. So I know that was a, a, a question of multiple parallel approvals. Right now, it's still in the outline...
The double jeopardy is what it is, yeah.
Yeah. How we, how we deal with that, right now, it's still in there, whether, whether we remove it or not, there's a placeholder for it. I understand that that's a question.
It's occurring to me that maybe, maybe your measure for what goes in the rules and regulations and what goes in the bylaw, maybe the, the things that go in the rules and regulations are things that seem to be a little more fluid and, and not mechanical, that things that could be dated or things that are a little bit harder and more, more subjective, that are harder to pin down.
Or things that evolve as technology evolves, or...
Yeah, right, that, that people's sensibility, it's, you know, a project might come to town and, and everybody thinks it's going to be good, and it gets passed, and it, it gets built, and there's a problem. Something like that, that, you know, is hard to forecast, but, and it's less mechanical, it's subjective.
Right.
And maybe, I, I, I don't, that's not a well-formed thought, but just, it's occurring to me.
As you sleep on that thought...
Yeah, I'll share.
Yeah. So then, we talked about what the effective date is, when it lapses, this, we're going through that with the, the two solar projects, when, when do special permits lapse, site plan, same thing, we talk about that. We talk about extensions. We still only have good cause. We haven't really come up with a better definition of good cause yet. We talk about performance guarantees, which are different in concept than the securities. So some things, we may want some performance guarantees, which are different than the covenants and the, and the securities. So I have a placeholder for that, to think about that. Talk about how the, the process for reducing security and release of security, and a lot of that gets tied back later on to certificate of occupancy. The, that was special permit. Now, if we go to a site plan review, I wanted to make a couple of comments. One, by separating site plan review and special permit, we now have the ability to apply site plan review to as-of-right uses, which we could not do before. So speaking again of solar, which in the past, solar over parking lots was an as-of-right use. There was no board involvement, no zoning. Now, though, we could, for, for, let's say, we have, under some criteria, in the commercial zone, let's just say, if you wanted to use solar over a parking lot, we can apply or require a site plan review.
Which I think makes huge sense because there are 100 ways that you could do that, and some of them good and some of them bad. The whole concept is great, but...
And that means it gives, it gives one of the boards, one of the land use permitting boards, the ability to influence those designs.
Yeah.
The important concept, the other important concept is the distinction that we need to keep in mind. Site plan review is codified in master general law. That is, is established there, excuse me, special permit.
Special permit.
I, I said, a special permit is codified in master general law. Site plan review, master general law is silent on it, but in general, it's been understood that towns can regulate that. So we may put more wording, and I, I defer to my greater legal minds, in, in site plan review to, to establish a grounding in law, town law, but, but bylaw. But basically, we follow the same outline, but we need to keep in mind that now that we've done this, we can apply site plan review in more cases, and we want to make sure that we have good grounding for applying site plan review. What else did I want to say? Applicability, right now, the, the things that require special permit or site plan review tend to be driven by number of parking spaces, that's one of the key triggers, the parcel size, greater than 30 acres, a particular, a particular use, large-scale ground-mounted solar array, and the district with, 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 that it's in. So in the conference recreational, you've got to have a site plan review special permit. Then we go a little further, what are the contents of a site plan review, what other information? So a little more information here than we had in the special permit, and some of that flowed over into the procedures. We're still working where that ends up. We have the review criteria, again, conditions for approval, what are their general conditions, how it relates to the other bylaws, again, the conservation commission, we, we have to talk about how to deal with that, relation to subdivisions, neither, and that's just a basic statement that says neither the granting of a special permit or a site plan review automatically approves your subdivision. The dates, we've added a clause now that it's separated from site plan review that requires the recording, excuse me, now that we've separated from special permit, requires the recording of site plan review with the, with the, either the registry of deeds or the, the land court. I don't, I think it's the registry of deeds that we want to talk about. Oh, the other important thing for us to remember is site plan review is just that, it's a review. We can condition it, but you can't...
You can't reject it.
You can't, you can't say it's denied. And in, and you can't condition it out of existence either.
Can we try? Just kidding.
Well, we, we, we need to be reasonable and...
I totally get that.
We just can't be arbitrary and capricious.
I totally get that.
That's, that's sort of the standard for everything we do. As long as it's not arbitrary and capricious, we have, we have some standing, I think. Again, site plan reviews, we're, we're going to time them. I think we're saying three years now instead of two, but we can, we can figure what we want to say on that. And then we have to deal with what happens...
I'm sorry, what, what, two years instead of three for, or the opposite?
I think they said, I can't remember, currently, I think it's two, the, the general...
State law says you can do three.
Yeah, the state law has changed, it says three, so we have to, we have to reconcile all that when these, when these laps.
Yeah, we can go to three. I think it's a question for the board as to whether you want to do that in light of some of the questions that we've encountered with the solar projects.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm throwing it out there, think about when do the, when do, how long do we want these permits to be good for, before they have to come back?
Come back.
Again, then we move into performance guarantees. We can't, we can't bond it, but we can have some performance guarantees, I think. We then talk about revisions. I didn't talk about revisions to special permit, but site plan, we could do major or minor. We could do revisions to the special permit.
That would be good to...
Those clauses back there.
Give some measures.
And then I added a section, which we had talked about, administrative approval for minor alterations to a building, which we have granted to the planning office, so we, you know, and, and for minor revisions, in general, we defer to the planning office for those things, with informing us that, that it's before them and then what the decision was. Security, looking for certificates of completion for both site plan review and special permit. We want to see as-built plans, professional certification, and any changes in improvements, you know, change log for, against the plan.
Might want some inspections in there.
Yeah, we're, we're going to talk about inspections.
Okay.
I didn't actually have an inspections paragraph in these two places, but, but I have inspections. Variances is the purview of the zoning board of appeals. I don't think we changed any of the content which was previous in there. If, if the zoning board of appeals would like to see changes to the, to the variance process, they can, they can let us know. I, I don't know if anybody let Nasi know we were doing this, that was a suggestion early on. Variances, we didn't change pre-existing non-conforming uses and structures. We carried that forward. I don't think we changed anything that was there before.
Yeah.
What we did is, there wasn't a appeals process, we brought that forward, documented the appeal process. One of the things that Sherri and I are going back and forth on is, right now, as in our current bylaw, and I could, I thought it was in master general law, but I, we haven't been able to find it, the appeal authority for our decisions is the zoning board of appeals. So, and for zoning enforcement decisions goes to the zoning board of appeals. We've kept that, whether that's required or not, that's the way it is today. What we did add is because we broke, broke site plan out from special permit, while there isn't an approval or a disapproval, we've allowed for the, the applicant to feel that the conditions were egregious, an appeal process for those conditions through the zoning board. I don't know who, I haven't figured out who, I guess appeals for their decisions go to the court. And we codified violations enforcement, talked about the zoning enforcement officer...
There we go.
...violations, prosecution of violations, which was pretty much just brought forward from what was previously there. We added a clause on site preparation, which was a discussion. We're now saying some conditions, you can't begin site preparation until certain conditions have been met. So don't go start bulldozing trees, we're, we're trying to codify when site prep can work. We codified the requirement for inspections, and we basically, at the end, tie granting of a certificate of occupancy, basically saying, all conditions of approval have been met and certified and confirmed by inspection, all, everything that we're supposed to do. You can't get a certificate of approval until all the check-offs are done. You can't get a certificate of approval until all the check-offs are done. And, we've started, I've started adding word in here, that the, either the site plan review authority or the special permit granting authority, there needs to be a positive feedback loop. So, when a check-off happens, or approval happens, or a security is released, there's a feedback loop, so that everybody is aware of that. That's, so that's generally the outline of the document, and we're trying to meet the new objectives without losing anything from the, the prior bylaw. To make this work, Article III will need to be updated. I think that, that we've made the recommendation a couple of times, and we've discussed it with the planning office. Performance standards is defined in Article 12. There's a whole lot of good performance sta... 1216.9 says, if you're going for a special permit or a site plan review, this, this article is excluded. So, we're, I'm going to, I think we're going to recommend that we drop that exclusion. But, let me know if you know of any adverse consequences to that. So, all the work in the performance standards section, every site plan, special permit, it's, well, right now, it says special permit, I don't think it says site plan review, but then it tied back to the old Article 15, so, I don't think we want to exclude, exclude site plans and, excuse me, special permits from the designs, or, excuse me, performance standards, unless you can think of a reason. Ken, you couldn't think of any reason that that was there, right?
No, I, I can't think of a reason, except that maybe it makes the process more onerous.
Okay. All right. The other thing, we've talked about weaving in, and I don't know if it's in the procedures or in the bylaw, to give the, the, either the special permit granting authority or the site plan review, the ability to waive requirements, if it makes sense, with certain caveats, you've got to have forfeits, you know, super majority, or whatever the, you know, the requirement, we establish some requirement to waive a requirement. We have land use rules, so, moving on to the next document, the organization, the rules and regs, very similar to the subdivision rules and regs, establish the authority, definitions, what's the history of modifications, references, things like that. Talk about special permits, the procedure, the application, review criteria, which, right now, is in both places, so we have to decide where it belongs. The procedure, fees, the plan, and how, public hearing, requirement for public hearing, things like that. Then we do site plan review, similar, similar outline. And then, at the end, go ahead.
I think the similarity of the two outlines is a good idea, because then it makes clearer what the differences are between the two. And it's, it's not like trying to compare apples and gorillas.
And, right now, on the land use procedures, we put a placeholder for A&Rs and subdivisions. Right now, we have a separate set of rules and regulations that cover A&Rs and subdivisions, which, by the way, has been revised, Sam and I, and Ken, and Charlie worked on that a year ago. We need to get it either as part of the process incorporated or blended into a single land use document, or separate documents. And we'll talk to Ken about, does it make sense to bring all this together, or keep them separate? But, we need to bring the subdivision rules and regulations forward for, for public hearing and approval as well. And then the definitions, I said, just a working placeholder for terms that are specific to this. So, for example, we were reviewing this with, with one of our people providing it, and they said, well, what's the definition of use? So, we have a definition for use, for example. I don't think that's in Article 16 today, but, I have to cross-check all that, make sure there's no inconsistencies.
I have wondered about the idea of getting all the definitions in one place, and, one way that, some of the codes and guidelines that I've had to work with handle that, is that anything that has a definition, any term that has a definition in the definitions section is italicized in the text. So, if you're reading through, and it's like, oh, what does that mean? You know that you can look and find a definition for it.
Or do a hyperlink on it as well.
Yeah, we, we now have the ability to do hyperlinking and things like we didn't have in the past. And Sherri, from her experience, and Julie, from some legal, we're, we're going to come up with, how do we, how do we call out defined terms? But the other thing, we're going back and forth, and, and Sherri, I'm going to defer to you here, is, do we want to have definitions article by article, or all pulled to the end? And Sherri noted that with the town bylaw, you're, you're moving it to article by article. Is that correct?
That's right, and that's what makes sense there, and I, I think what we need to do is to collect the definitions, abbreviations, and, and see what the list looks like, and what is the easiest for the user, whether it's, you know, bylaw by bylaw, or, you know, article by article, or whether we need to put all the definitions and abbreviations in one place in the entire zoning bylaw.
It seems that if there's some sort of indication of the terms as the, as you're going through the text, that tells you that that is defined, that it might be easier to collect all those definitions in one place. Otherwise, if they're not, if it's not flagged somehow through the text, then I would advocate, as you were saying, for putting it in the section that it's applicable to.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. I mean, normally, you flag in a legal document that a term is a defined term by capitalizing initial caps. But, we can, we can ponder a few approaches and see what makes the most sense.
Yeah, I can, as an example, the International Building Code italicizes anything defined. Because it doesn't, I guess they don't use italics for anything else, so, it's a matter of...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's where we're at.
Yeah. It's a big, big hill to climb.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're spending a lot of time ticking and tying to make sure we didn't drop something.
I'm sure.
And, please, any, any question you have, random thought, nightmare, did you think about this, where is this, we need that kind of help, because it's, like you said, it's a lot of detail that we don't want to, don't want to miss anything, and, and we're thanking Ken for all his guidance, and Julie Moran is helping us quite a bit, so...
Yeah, and I would just add that, I think we're trying to strike a balance that puts as much as reasonably and legally possible in the rules and regulations, because obviously that gives the board more flexibility in addressing the kinds of issues that, that, you know, Jane has alluded to, the changing circumstances, that if you need to go through a bylaw change, it can be a lengthy process. So, we'll try to put as much as we can in the rules and regulations and preserve that flexibility, but there are likely to be things that, that just cannot be moved in that way.
Okay, all right, great work. Now I understand the gray hair. All right, next up. A&R at Bay Point, frontage on Onset Ave. We have someone here to speak to that.
Mike, we specifically requested the engineer. Our engineer and their engineer.
That's, well, that's coming up. Ken, do we have our engineer here to speak to this?
Yes, sir, yes, we do.
Good. Okay, good, we need some guidance.
Mr. Chairman, I may be able to help you with that. The A&R for Onset Avenue, we'd like to withdraw this evening.
Okay.
Complicated, complicated bit of business anyway, we probably withdraw at this point. Right to refile at some future date, depending on circumstances.
Any objection or concerns from anybody on the board for the request? I don't think we need a motion on that, do we? Where it's pulling... Okay, all right, so noted, thank you.
Thank you.
And the A&R at Bay Point, frontage on Bay Point Drive.
Right, that one, we'd like to move forward on. I had supplied to Mr. Buckland today, a request, an additional request for a minor modification of that site plan review and special permit that was granted. And he, he had that, we had received word last Thursday from town council, that in his opinion, a minor modification was required, and so that's what we have submitted to Mr. Buckland for review. It changes really nothing in the factual basis of what you see before you, the plan is exactly the same. There is nothing different about the plan, it's still subdividing the commercial golf course piece, if you will, which is about two acres from the 5.79 piece that is the residential unit. Our rationale for doing it, one is the permit that was actually granted required that we file an A&R, it's part of the, one of the requirements, so we're, we're following those requirements. We had thought, to be perfectly honest with you, given the fact that the A&R was part of that plan, that the necessity of a minor subdivision modification may not be required. We've gotten a different opinion, which we're willing to, to along, go along with. We feel it's a minor revision really for two reasons. One is, it's something that you knew about from when you approved the plans as written. There's nothing in there differently than anything that, that, that we're asking for tonight. And two is, that is exactly the same treatment that all other phases that have already been approved, and one completely built, and one being built, or two being built, follows. The residential piece was separated out, a related entity takes control of that site, it builds it, it sells them, it prepares for the condominium documents, and then once it's done, it goes out of existence, if you will, as to the condominium, the condominium association steps up and takes over. In this case, that would be the face for the residential piece, exactly the same as we've done before. As to the commercial piece, it made perfect sense to us, and hopefully to you, that that will get involved into Bay Point Club LLC, which is the golf course. So now, the clubhouse and that type of use is incorporated into the golf course, so if you're going to take action against the golf course, or needed any enforcement, you have the whole golf course now. Instead of having a bifurcated, you know, clubhouse on someone else owns, and then a golf course over here that someone else owns, which makes no logical sense, or I think logistic sense as well. So, for that reason, we feel it's a very minor change, because as I said, it's nothing new, it's not something you've not seen, it was seen all through the entire process of you approving the original plan that was approved.
Questions, comments? Bye. Okay, go ahead.
Attorney Rosa, thank you for that explanation about the, the separation of commercial and the, the development aspect. Just a quick question, I don't remember, the pump house, which we've had a lot of discussion about the pump house, is that, that is owned by the Bay Point LLC, correct?
Correct.
And we don't need any changes to make that happen?
No. And the, and the new, the new clubhouse, or the new, the pumping station is also on golf course land, so you've got it all in one entity.
Great, that, that makes sense to me, consistent with what you were explaining.
Logistically, it makes some sense.
Okay. I don't have any other questions about this.
There are two plans in the set that they submitted, one is the overview of the, of the all phases, and showing the relationship of the property, and then they have the one that shows the subdivision of the land. The approval not required type of subdivision, so it's just based on the, on whether or not you have a legitimate access way that it fronts on, and it has the proper frontage for the, the district. There's no set requirement for a frontage in the district, so, any frontage is good frontage, in this case. And you have a, a road that's been approved as, in the subdivision of the land, so it's, 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 meets the criteria for a roadway at which you can have frontage.
We dragged the poor guy out for the night, I'd like to hear from our engineer, if I could.
All right, let's see what he has to say.
Yeah, and a lot of our questions were really on the lot lines and things for the other...
The other A&R, yeah.
Perhaps he could introduce himself, I haven't...
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. Do you have these plans, or have you reviewed these?
No, we have not. My name is Paul Mattos, with Alana Major Associates, we are a peer review consultant for the town of Wayham. We did receive an email this morning around 10:30, asking us to attend a meeting, so we really haven't had a, a chance to review the plans. We did get a copy of the application that was submitted, we did a quick courtesy review, and again, as Ken Buckland did say, that, you know, a standard A&R plan, all you really need to do is show frontage and the required area, and, and the roadway has to be either a public way or shown on an approved plan that has been endorsed by the board, or on the way that was shown prior to the enactment of zoning in the town of Wayham. So, the plan does meet all that criteria. The only thing I was concerned with is that, on, during the application, or part of the application, there were some conditions that were attached to the application, and one of the conditions said that you couldn't subdivide the property further for any buildable lots, so I'm not sure how that may be in conflict with the approval of a new A&R plan, but if all this was shown previously as stated by the attorney here, then I would think that you're probably okay.
And, and there is, the, the purpose is not to create more buildable lots, it's just to separate the clubhouses.
If you think about it, we have an existing lot with buildings on it, which is going to be incorporated into the golf course. We have a buildable lot, at least in my interpretation of it, in which we're going to put the residential units, and that's what we're going to have when we're done. We're going to have a, a buildable lot, which will have residential units, we'll have another lot that has buildings on it, but that will be incorporated into another one, so we haven't created a new lot, really, we've just, you know, moved the line around, and we're, we're not creating new buildable lots, we're, I think the, the reference he made is absolutely correct, that was to subdivide this land further, and to, you know, like, take some of the lots and make four house lots where there's two. That, that clearly is prohibited by that, the original decision, and that's not what we're doing here, we're merely, we're, we're building just as you have approved it having been built, and we can't further subdivide that out to create more buildable lots, and I don't know how we can do it with this site, I mean, it doesn't really apply to this site.
So, by, by segregating this off, this is separating it from the lot of land that we approved as phase four?
Correct, and it's incorporating it into the golf course.
And it doesn't change the land area that was approved for phase four?
No, it does not. There was always a, a, kind of a, the line was not drawn on the plan, because it was one piece of land, but the line was always there, the parking and all, kind of everything to the, I guess just the north of that, was to be part of the golf course land, and the build, the buildings are on another section of that same land, and that keeps, that is exactly what you have here when you're done.
Sam? Carl? Mike? Jane? Sherri?
Nothing.
Okay, so, so as our town advisor on these subjects, you don't see any reason that we should be concerned with this request?
No, has phase four been designed and approved by the town?
Yes.
What my only concern was, is when you're dividing the lot and creating a new lot line, is, like, when they did phase four, they had a total lot area, and then they said, you know, this is going to be 50% green, 50% impervious, now with this new lot line, you know, again, I just thrown out a number of 50%, I don't know what the numbers are, but if they're now creating a lot that's only six acres, you may have more impervious on that one lot, but if it's all part of the main development for Bay Point, uh, not Bay Point, uh, yeah, Bay Point, right? Yeah, for Bay Point, then you should be, you should be okay.
Yeah, we, we did have some questions. Phase four had an impact on density, and the previous consulting engineer or peer review, we had a lot of discussions about that. I don't think that this changes density, because it was density... I don't think that this changes density because it was density for the entire.
Yeah.
Well, if it gets divided into a different entity, does that affect total development of Bay Point? Bay Point, say it's 130 acres and phase four was supposed to be on 10 acres. And now they're subdividing it and it's getting a little bit small. So everything's being compacted and dense. But, you know, again, if it's all part of the same development in Bay Point and they're just doing that, separate the residential from commercial and then all your condominiums are going to be associated with that one phase, it shouldn't be an issue.
Right.
You may have answered, you may have stated this already, but the purposes for management of the.
Well, it's not really, it's not really the management as such. It's really the whole concept of the approvals was that the ownership of all the residential units was always going to be different than Bay Point. We've got 28 owners, we've got 28 owners. So the idea of approving a condominium suggests that you knew at some point there would be a separation of the land ownership. Now whether it goes through a related entity and then out to the lot owners or not. But when the end of the day is you're going to have, in this case, you know, 52 owners of this land, so it's always going to be separated. It's not like we're incorporating a different concept to this. And that's the same thing that was done on all the other plans. The only reason this wasn't done in the original approval that it was done on phase two, three, one, two, and three, was that Bay Point didn't own this land when this was done. It was owned by Wayham Redevelopment Authority. And if you recall, the land disposition agreement between them and Bay Point was that once we have approvals to build this, then we will pay the money, which we have done almost a year ago now. And the money was paid to the town. And so we're not doing anything different. The only reason it's getting a slightly different treatment is because we didn't own this land. Had we owned this land already, we would have, the approval we already got would have taken care of that. And then what I meant about management is going forward, if something, you know, Bay Point LLC did something that the town needed to deal with, they've got an entire golf course with a pro shop that they have available to, for whatever remedies they, you know, they deem appropriate. So going forward, I think it helps the town in that respect.
Two motions.
Two motions? Are we ready for any more discussion on this?
Let's see, any other input?
Okay, so first motion I'd like to make is I move that we, and I don't have the project number, that we approve the A and R at Bay Point with frontage on Bay Point Drive as documented on plan set dated.
9/20/22.
9/20/22. That should be the modification. 5/20/23. Modified 5/22/23.
Yep. So a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
I have a second motion, which was sort of implied in Attorney Rosa's opening remarks, that we approve the minor modification or the modification to the site plan special permit as a minor modification, which means we don't need to hold public, this is not part of the motion, but we don't have to hold a public hearing. So we approve it as a minor modification and, which means our planner can be involved. And I recommend that we bring the consulting or peer engineer into the process so that they begin to become familiar with it because I have a note either in the staff comment section or at the end of this discussion. So I move that this be approved as a minor.
Minor modification? Do we have a second?
Long way to go to get a second.
Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I do have one request.
Sure.
We seem to be having a difficult time getting a final inspection report of phase one. There's varying descriptions of completeness or not complete. So I would like to see an all-out effort to get that final inspection of phase one done and through the board to the planning office, preferably before the next planning board meeting.
So to that comment, just so you know, at the request of the director of planning, I have been asked to form a subcommittee of one to work with Mr. Fay and his engineer and our peer engineer to accomplish three things. Identify what remains to be done to close out phase one. Confirm that whatever items that weren't completed as part of the conditions for phase one were actually incorporated in phase two and phase three. So that's one action item, close out phase one. Determine what actions, like release of the surety, the board needs to memorialize. The second item is to bring forward the schedule for phase two and work and releases to make sure it's current. One, there's been a change of engineers on both sides. So that security schedule needs to be brought forward. Work with them to get that updated. And the third request, excuse me, got a frog in my throat, was that currently phase three is under covenant. And there's a request that we develop a schedule and create a form of surety similar to the other phases for phase three. So I have agreed, which I think Ken talked to the chair about, to do some of that work. I'm not sure if we're going to get it done by the next board meeting.
Okay.
But we can take it in pieces.
Well, the reason that I asked for it is it seems like it's been going on forever and with no end in sight, which is irritating. The other thing that I wanted to mention, which I hope you can bring back to Mr. Fay, is we acted on his inserts into residences' mailboxes about the use of Gahoon Road and Short Neck Road as access to the project while Bay Point was being under construction. He was informed by the building commissioner that that was not an option. And he was given permission to build a temporary road so that he can continue his work. I spoke with the building commissioner today. He is continuing to get complaints from residences on that road that the contractors are still using it. It is a condition of approval for the project. And we really need him to put a stop to it.
Okay.
Because we do have options, which he won't approve of. But it'd be much easier if he just got ahold of everybody and said, "Those roads are off limits. Stay off them."
I will certainly, I will certainly take that with.
I appreciate that. That would be very helpful. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, through, gosh. Through you to the director of planning. We had authorized Jonathan to request our consulting peer review complete a final inspection for phase one. Do you know if that actually got done?
I actually asked for a punch list from Phil Cudero about Bay Point Phase One. But I haven't seen that yet, so I don't know where the process is. Maybe, Paul, do you have any idea?
I do not know the status of that. But I will confirm with Phil tomorrow morning when I get back to the office and we'll notify you of what status is.
Yeah, that's one of the steps to closing out phase one.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, discussion and possible vote on replacement bonds for solar decommissioning at 299 Farm to Market Road, 77 Farm to Market Road, 71 Charlotte Furnace Road, and 160 to Hornet Road. I've seen the proposed renewals. They're not even close to meeting the new standards that we've adopted for decommissioning. So I don't know what the board's feeling is on it. If it were my call, I would send it back to them with a request to revise them to meet the standards set forth by the request we made at 025.
I agree 100%.
These are duplicates of the five years ago bonds that they had put up. And so I had asked for them to consider the higher amounts, which are 458,000 per megawatt for the panels and 50,000 per megawatt for the battery energy storage systems. I haven't heard back from them on that yet.
So what would be, have these expired? Or are they about to expire?
They're about to expire. They'll expire this year.
This year, next month? This year in December?
This year in December.
Okay, so we have a little bit of time to work with.
Yeah, but I think if you take a vote that you're going to have as a set number, the 458,000 per megawatt for the panels and the 50,000 per megawatt for the best, then I can pass that on to them and force the issue.
I, well, I think it's, you know, we need to apply this with a level hand. So if it's good for 025, it should apply to these projects as well.
Exactly.
And to Borrego extensions.
Right.
And when Fearing Hill eventually comes back.
Exactly. As we move forward, this is the standard that we've assessed to decommissioning.
You'd have to treat all of them the same.
And then if, you know, if they come back with a concern or complaint and it gets to the point where these bonds do expire, at which point now we, they're in, they're not in compliance.
Not in compliance with their special permit.
So now we can reopen the subject and it might get more concerning than just the bonds.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. So I would, Mike, you have anything to add? Sherry?
I agree with you.
Oh, thank you. So I would entertain.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Through you to the director of planning. Mr. Buckland, as part of the conditions of approval for these projects, I know we established the five-year review of the bond. Were there also conditions for inspections?
Yes, there were.
And have we been getting those inspections?
For the most part, I believe we have been getting inspections.
And where are those reports going? To your office?
Sometimes.
That sounds great.
Okay, so I don't know what we want to do about inspections, but that's a separate.
That's a separate, yeah.
But related.
Right. Okay. Okay, so entertain a motion that we do not accept the replacement bonds as presented for 299 to Farm to Market Road, 77 Farm to Market Road, 71 Charlotte Furnace Road, and 160 to Hornet Road. And that we return them back to the proponents with the request for them to meet the new standard.
Can we enumerate the new standard in the motion? Ken, could you just repeat it?
458,000 for the panels and per megawatt. And 50,000 per megawatt for the best.
For the best.
I'm moved.
We have a second?
Good idea.
Jump in. All right, we have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason. All in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. 600. I'm going to take, I'm going to ask John Churchill to come up before we dive into the one continued public hearing. Sorry I made you wait so long. I tried to help you out.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Is Sherry going to be able to, did she duck on us?
She might have turned the camera off.
All right. Is she going to be able to see?
There she is.
I can see.
I'll hold it up.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. As discussed in the beginning, this is an informal. Informal review. I appreciate you taking, kind of taking the lead. You're actually the first person that we've had that's reached out and said, "Let's talk." So, thank you.
We appreciate you having us.
Might have been the attorney's idea.
I'm not even going to go there. So.
Okay, well, thank you again for having us this evening. Again, John Churchill, J.C. Engineering with me. Brad Petol with J.C. Engineering. And I'll let Peter introduce. Peter Tittlebaum. Basically, we wanted to come before you get on the, we're about 75% with the definitive subdivision plan process. We asked, we reached out to the planning department and asked if we can get in front of the planning board just to get your eyes on what we're proposing, what we're thinking. So what we have here, I'll go through it. This project's off of County Road. Basically, backside of Squirrel. There's probably one board member that I definitely know of that was here when this project was originally approved back in 2010. So this was the project with two entrances off of County Road. It came in, so if you look at the conventional development plan, the one with higher dense, the all yellow in the pond. It's a man-made pond in the middle of the site. It was excavated for the gravel.
Whitehead sand pit, Joe.
The Whitehead sand pit, exactly. So that's what's known in the West Wayham area. Basically, so what you see here, this proposed development, the road came in, went around the pond, and then back out, back out onto County Road. So what we did is the density down below, you're looking at, there's 56 lots. It's 140 acres of land and almost 12,500 feet of roadway. So that plan was approved with the exception of the interior. There was 12 lots interior. They didn't own the property at that time. They since purchased that in 2012 or 13. So that's what you see before you on the conventional development plan. So when I looked at the, when I looked at the project, I said, you know what? This is screaming cluster subdivision. Trying to preserve the open space. So what you see there is under the residential cluster development plan as per the bylaw. Same law count, we only have one access point off of County Road. We come in, up, there's a man-made ditch that we need to cross. Other than that, we're outside the 50-foot no-touch for all wetland, for all wetland resource areas. We come in, here about 6,000 feet of roadway now, 50-foot right-of-ways. And coming down the end of that, if you're following this convention, the cluster development plan, even the other plan, the cul-de-sac at the end, that's the rail line at the end there. So that actually is a path that crosses over that rail line. And that's the extension of the end, if you will, of Squirrel Island Road down there. So if you follow Squirrel Island Road all the way to the end, take that hard turn, and then you come, and there's a gate there and a lot of stumps. And it's not traversable right now. So we're not looking to go through to Squirrel Island Road. But the design considerations that we have considered of such definitely leave a fire gate if anything ever happens, like the Kremisit, Swiss Beach thing that just happened when the gas line over in Swiss Beach, they had to evacuate those people through Kremisit. So to help anybody on Squirrel Island Road that may or may not need to be evacuated at any point, we would allow for that via trucks to be able to open that gate up and let them onto our road that we're proposing. In addition to that, the Squirrel Island Road, some of those lots are actually bettered with a water betterment. But the water department never put the water line within Squirrel Island Road. So some of those homes did receive the betterment, paid the betterment, and haven't received the service. And the reason why that is, is because Squirrel Island Road, as you know, the width of Squirrel Island Road, they don't want to do the construction, if you will, because if they do the construction within Squirrel Island Road, then residents can't get by. So they actually have to shut Squirrel Island Road down in order to actually do the excavation and installation of the water line. They talked to a cranberry bar owner to get out to Blackmore Pond Road. They were denied that access. So I've been in conversation with Andy Cunningham. And if this project does go forward, I definitely told him, we'd definitely give them an easement to allow them to allow those residents during construction or whatever during our project, allow those residents to use our entrance out to County Road in order for them to be able to install that water main within Squirrel Island Road. In addition to that, and to that point, the conventional plan has 44 betterments on it. Again, 44 betterments without a water main as they were assessed. So as part of this project, there will be installation. So as part of this project, there will be installation of the water line in addition to the betterment fee that has to be paid, which is already paid through the tax bill. It's already incorporated in there. But just thought I'd note that. It was, that's where two thousand and ten pretty much is when this got approved. They looked at it. There were betterments flying back then, as you, as you recall. So that, the cost and everything that happened with the economy, the project just became not viable. So now it's resurfacing at this point. We're looking to do twenty-two foot wide pavement width, which is in the planning board rules and regulations. We'd like to do Cape Cod burn on both sides, definitely a sidewalk on one side, you know, lantern, light posts, lanterns connected. We would like to, what else were we going to do? Basically detention basins. You're looking at about a hundred and seventeen acres of open space. So we're looking to actually keep, confine our development to the twenty-eight acres and a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty acres of, of open space. There's beautiful walking trails throughout this, around that pond. We go there, I walked there personally myself, and I'd like to invite any planning board member without constitute in the quorum to definitely go walk the site, definitely take you for a walk. It's, 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 it's a very, very, very nice piece of land. That is a man-made pond. They excavated that pond and took the, took the silica, I believe it is, out of there and, and trucked that out through the train, the rail, the rail line. So that's what you, what we're left with basically is in mine site. So some of the area is a little barren. You can see it's beautiful, beautiful white sand. It's actually out there when you walk it. But like I said, it is, it is beautiful when you walk the site. But compared to the conventional plan, compared, you know, so the only thing it triggers basically is a special permit and a definitive subdivision plan by going to the cluster, whereas on the conventional plan, it would just be obviously just a forty-eight, just a regular subdivision plan. So I believe the cluster's the way to go. And I'm hoping the board, you know, sees that as well, because it opens up the special permit avenue as well. Unfortunately, the, the only thing is, and I heard Mr. Schultz talk about it earlier, is that you're not allowed to waive any type of cluster or any type of zoning issues, whereas most towns have that in their authority. So what we have here is, in the zoning district, the setbacks are sixty feet front, twenty side and rear. These lots are almost thirteen thousand square feet to fifteen thousand square feet. So it's very, very hard to meet those setbacks. We can fit, what we're looking to build out there is capes, colonials, ranches, modest, you know, garage options. But the only other avenue we would have to do is we would probably have to go to zoning board appeals if we wanted to get those setbacks waived. We were thinking maybe like a forty-foot front setback rather than a sixty. If we're trying to preserve trees, it's, it's hard when you, when you, when you got all these big setbacks in there, because those are not only just the structure, they're the front stoop, they're the decks, they're the stairs, you know, so bulkheads. So it's, it gets challenging to shoehorn those in there. So that, that's a consideration that we've thought about. I just thought I'd just be open and honest with all that. Other than that, basically, we're going to meet the, the conventional development plan. I don't know if you remember it. Basically, a lot of their wetland, a lot of their drainage was directly discharged actually into that man-made pond, because they were allowed to do that based on the standards at that time. Whereas ours, our development's going to meet the conventional ninety percent TSS removal. We're going to use Enviro, was it EnviroTech? It was the technology, this is technology in addition to detention basins. And so we're going to use the Enviro, it's like a more Technics type, that's a, that's a proprietary type, but something to that effect, where it removes the total suspended solids, and then you go into a sediment for bay, and then you're going to go into a detention basin as well. So most of the drainage is there. The other consideration is, so the roadway, if you look at coming off of County Road, we have in our regulations, the thousand-foot road, unless we can go over a thousand feet if other topography or natural features occur. Well, there's, like I said, there's a man-made ditch that basically connects the two properties. We can, it's really not useful, but we can meet the thousand-foot requirement. We just have to put another spur, another three hundred foot spur on to allow for two separate, if you will, two separate roadways, if you will. So it doesn't, so it meets the definition of not a dead-end road over a thousand feet. But I think it's in your, in your, the way the regulations read, it's in your, it's adjur, you're in your purview to grant, to go over the thousand foot in a situation like this, rather than add an extra three hundred feet of roadway just to meet that, that requirement. Because it does, it's not a waiver, it just says in the opinion of the planning board. So it's just an opinion-type matter. So we'd like to keep it the way it is, and we can discuss that further once you see the actual design of it. As I said, conservation-wise, we're looking at, we're outside fifty feet except for this man-made ditch, which is up here off of County Road. You can't really see it, but it's probably about an eight to ten-foot ditch, definitely a man-made ditch. It was basically between the old band of cranberry bog on one side and a low level, a low area north of it that puddles. So it's just, it was made to get the water basically from out of, out of that, out of the Walcott yard basically, over into this, into the cranberry bog system. So obviously, we'd be culvering that. It's dry. I was out there last week, Peter walked over, Peter, it's absolutely dry. It's, there's no, there's no water, no standing water at all in this ditch at all. It's just made, it was a conveyance basically is what it was. Basically, I just want to get the board sort of, you know, get the board here. And if you guys want to add anything, I think I pretty much covered mostly.
Mr. Chairman, it's a gigantic property, a hundred and forty acres. If I hadn't been with John, I probably would have gotten lost out there. One of the interesting things here is I don't think I've seen a development of this size in town where there's so much land set aside to not be developed that would go to the homeowners association to be preserved. It's just a huge amount. Now, as John said, there is a fair amount of this that's not wooded up when it's sand. At one time, it was wooded up, and then they, you know, they mined out the sand. Even though it's very visible, this white sand down, you know, if you Google earth, you'll certainly see it. It's already starting to sort of have some grasses, whatnot, are starting to come in slowly here and there. You know, areas where water puddles, you'll see grasses starting to come up and stuff like that. So nature's starting to reclaim it, very much like the property in East Wareham that was brought before town meeting for rezoning that failed. Nature does start to take these things back, and that is in the process of happening right here. The views of the pond are really nice from all the way around the pond. It's a very scenic site. Shrinking the roadways means less impervious surface on the site overall, and I think that's a good thing. Clustering the lots pretty much on the, I guess, is that's north we're looking at pretty much? Do we have true north on here?
Straight north, yeah. Straight.
North is sort of straight up.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, clustering them there and leaving the rest open and undeveloped, I think is the way to go. I think the one entrance in as opposed to the dual entrances from the prior approved plan is a big improvement. And, you know, this, this is the reason we have cluster zoning, is to allow for proposals like this. The houses here are not going to be like some of the ones that are happening on the northern part of town with a large agricultural owner is looking to basically create South Hanover, I would call it, with the kinds of prices you see there, you know, eight, nine hundred, thousand dollar houses. These houses will be significantly less expensive. John tells me that you're looking at sixteen, eighteen hundred foot square houses. They're not McMansions. These are designed for the average couple making a reasonable middle-class income to buy and live in. We have a shortage of that kind of housing in this town. Again, you can go up Tyhona Pond and spend nine hundred grand. You can go to Onset and get something for two hundred and fifty grand that's got a red X on the door and tear it down and see what you can do with it. But there's not a lot in between those two extremes in town. We've got a new school that, that I think should be a magnet for families to start keeping their kids in Wareham schools, for families to want to move to Wareham to send their schools, their kids to the schools here. And this is the kind of housing that those people, I think, are going to be looking for. So I think it fits a need that we currently don't address with the housing stock in town. I think the, the prices, you know, they all seem terrible to me. I mean, I just can't imagine somebody paying a half million bucks for a house and calling that a plain old middle-class house. But that's the reality these days. That's, that's what property's worth. So to the extent that we have people in town that would like to stay here, but they don't have the, the sort of housing that they can raise a family in, I think this addresses that.
Thank you. In respect to the considerations you were talking about as far as setback and whatnot, I'm, I'm trying to visualize it, visualize it in my head. So you're talking about a forty-foot setback on the front.
Correct, yeah. Because the current way the zoning article reads for clusters, you have to actually meet the requirement for your front setback, side setback, rear setback in the zoning district you're in. So we're in the R sixty zoning district, so that means you're meeting the sixty-foot front, twenty-foot side and rear setback. Because, and I know they're looking to change this about three years. It was going ahead, and it just, I think it got lost in town meetings. They were going to say, you know, for clustered, you know, allow maybe half of what's in the zoning district, because it doesn't make sense to allow ten thousand square foot lots with a sixty-foot front setback, twenty-foot side and rear. I mean, you can't do a hundred by hundred lot and meet that. You can't, you just can't meet it. You have a twenty-foot white house. So it was, when they, when we did the cluster, we, we didn't address the setbacks of.
And what were you envisioning for the sides?
It's twenty, probably ten, probably for the sides. Not as much, I'm not really as worried as the sides as, as I am about actually this front setback being sixty feet. Because if you have a hundred, you know, a hundred-foot lot, a hundred by a hundred lot, you're basically, you got a twenty-foot white house.
So what are, what are some of the smaller-sized lots? I mean, they average out to like half an acre a piece at fifty-six lots and twenty-eight acres. But I see there are some that are a little bit bigger. But I'm just curious what some of the smaller lots are dimension-wise.
Hundred and five, we did a hundred and five by a hundred and thirty to meet the sixty-foot twenty-twenty's, to be able, to be able, to be able to put a ranch or a colonial with a two-car garage on that, on that property.
So we have it situated to meet the current bylaw, but we're, we're looking at going to ZBA, should this move forward, to, you know, request relief from that requirement so that we have a little more space to work on the lots. Just since that, the, the smallest lots here are about thirteen thousand square feet. We couldn't make a ten thousand square foot lot work with the current zoning setbacks.
Yeah. Yep.
And I mentioned it because I, I hear you're doing a rewrite. So Plymouth, for instance, allows the planning board to set, to set those setbacks as part of a cluster, actually. They're allowed to waive those setbacks down to whatever they choose or what's appropriate for the plan that you have in front of you.
Mr. Chair, just a, we've made a reference to the zoning bylaws. Which zoning bylaws will this be subject to? They had a plan ten years ago. Did that give them zoning protection?
No, it didn't.
Okay. So it's the current bylaw?
It's the current bylaw.
Twenty, well, whenever you submit it, but right now, that would be October of twenty twenty-two.
That's correct.
Each, these lots are being assessed as if they were actually subdivided, but as you know, you have seven years, but there was, obviously, there was a, the economic relief in like two thousand and twelve. There was another, there was a tolling period there, and then COVID had another tolling period. But I'm, you know, pretty sure that this is basically a subdivision that's over the seven, the eight-year.
Right. That's what I was trying to determine. So we're gonna, we're gonna.
This is fresh.
We're going to apply twenty twenty-two if it comes, I have more questions when you're ready, but.
I just had one thought. And sometimes when I look at this stuff and I come up with ideas, I become dangerous. So please. So you, you're concerned about setback, and I'm looking at, as the road comes in, the, the, I'll call it the main road that runs along the edge of the property down to lots fifty-four, fifty-five and fifty-six. So if you, is it the topography that's keeping you from moving forty-eight through fifty-three back off the road and giving back that twenty feet? Is that what's driving it that close?
Those lots, for instance, we can make deeper lots.
Well, this was my thought.
Yep.
So if I was looking to solve the, the setback, and, and I, I get it, every lot is a dolom. So that part I understand. But if you took fifty, lot number fifty-three or, or lot number forty-eight, pick it, pick one, and deleted it, that would allow you to take that first right-hand that goes past lots twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-three, and move that entrance to that road a little bit further down, which now gives you the ability to give more frontage to the road, to the lots that face that road, because that road's moved further back. It allows, it basically allows everything to shift toward lots fifty-four, fifty-five and fifty-six by X amount.
Yeah. So, so the lot layouts are situated this way to work around all the constraints that we have regarding septic location, drainage location, location. Using the, the topography that's out there today, there's that one green area at the intersection between lots twenty-four, forty-eight and forty-seven, that green area.
Yep.
That was the old pit at one point that we're going to modify and use as a drainage area. So it's, it's less excavation necessary. It's already partly.
So it's, so it's not undoable. It's just better for you economically to do it this way, because part of the work's already done.
Yeah. There's really no setback issues here. It's just something that we may pursue with the zoning board. We designed this, this development to meet today's standards, sixty-foot front setback, twenty and twenty.
I just, the, the reason that I bring it up, I used to live over on Tohonet Pond. You mentioned Tohonet, or somebody did. Something about spending nine hundred thousand dollars. Been there, done that. And those lots, for the most part, are very small. They're all about a quarter acre. And, and they have the sixty-foot and the twenty-foot. And even at those setbacks, you better love your neighbor. And there was only fifteen houses on that, in that little cluster. And they all fought like cats and dogs. That's why I don't live there anymore. So now we're looking at fifty-six personalities, you know, and to, to, to kind of bring them in even that much closer. Great for development, you know, but a year or two years later, when they start finding the dead bodies, you know, it might, it might not be so good. So it's just, it's just a thought.
There's a pond.
Just putting it in a pond.
Oh, yeah. The pond, yeah, the pond could be useful in that point. But like I said, that's just a, just a thought.
Well, well, one response to that would be all the crazy people are already up where you used to be, so there won't be any going here.
Yeah. There's no shortage of crazy people.
The other thing too, on the access points, as you see the green, is to allow people to get to the open space as well. If you're, if you're not abutting it, then you allow. So there's, there's some great walking paths.
So that was actually one question that I had. You mentioned that the green space would go to the HOA. And I wonder if in a neighborhood where you're trying to be price-conscious, given who you're focusing this on, I wonder if it might make more sense, and I, I honestly do not know the answer as to whether it works with, in the bylaw, but to give this land to conservation. And part of that question was related to maintenance and upkeep and just managing a big open space like that, which you think, oh, you just let it be. But there, there are expenses attached to that. And then the second thing is that I would love to see this open space be open to.
The public?
The public to go and walk. As you said, it's a really nice place to walk. And, you know, it's probably pretty limited, the number of people who actually go and walk in places like that, but it's really appreciated by that small segment of the citizens of the town.
Yeah. Even if you drew a line.
You've got a great access point here. You know, that's not a road that could be a great way to get in there without, you know, even using the roadways of the neighborhood.
Yeah. Even if you drew a line like behind fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, that was equal with the edge of the water and just continued that same buffer right along the rest of the houses, nineteen through twenty-four, forty-eight through fifty-three, and left the rest of that green space maybe, maybe to conservation?
Yeah. So the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, so the reason why those lots are where exactly they are is if you actually walk the existing path that's out there, it's off, well, no, it's off their lot, so you're not walking through their property.
Okay.
So that's why, so we designed these lots, so the existing walking path are not going to go through those lots. And that's another, you know, that's another reason why we're shortening up the lot. So because, you know, who wants an easement through your property with these people walking? So to your point, Jane, I agree a hundred percent. And that's, so the, the regulation says homeowner association or public entity or something to that effect.
Yeah. And I just think that if you're trying to aim this at people who are on a budget and trying to be homeowners, you know, maybe first-time homeowners, that you might not want to strap the HOA with the expenses of.
Yep.
Yeah. No, it's definitely something I thought about. I just, one of those things, I was like, oh, people are going to drive down there and park and say, I'm going to go use it. So now you have the neighborhood, and there's, there's, you know, you're going to probably have to have a parking, a place to park for.
People camp out there now, John.
Yes, they do.
One of the reliefs out there was Mr. Walcott passed away and dirt bikes. You know, if you put in a conservation property, then they got, the town got some control over it. They run that place rampant. I mean, it's been like that for the last thirty years.
You might also get some passive policing of people walking out there that, you know, discourage that kind of activity.
They're going to buy their kid a dirt bike, tell him, go have fun, get out of my face.
Yeah. Well, the other problem too, like I said, having lived the HOA life, is, you know, you've got a dozen homes that are enjoying the daylights out of the open space. you know, you've got a dozen homes that are enjoying the daylights out of the open space and the water, and the balance of the homes that really don't have direct access. And now you're gonna get infighting amongst them. You know, I'm paying the same HOAs you are, but you've got all this green space directly behind your house, and, and they don't. And like I said, you know, you'd like to think that people are bigger than that, but the reality is they're not.
I know. I, I'm dealing with-
So that's where, that's where not having it part of the HOA is probably-
Right, comes into play. Yeah, that would be a great, a great take, would be to section it off and-
So it would, it would go to the value of each of the pieces of property, what their view is.
Right.
But it would not be a matter of-
Yeah, I mean, obviously.
How they divide up the HOA fees.
Yeah. Obviously, those lots would have, would have a higher value, because they're gonna be abutting conservation land. So, but then it takes the-
They have to fend off the bears.
It takes the onus of maintaining and, and basically paying for that land off of the neighborhood.
Right. Because an association would have to pay the taxes on the property, plus they definitely need insurance, as, as Mr. Beatty said. There's definitely, I hear the coyotes, I hear the gunshots, and I hear, my house is right adjoining, pretty much. So I hear the coyotes, the gunshots, and I definitely-
And dirt bikes.
All the dirt bikes. You can definitely hear those.
And a pond.
With that?
And a pond.
Oh, yeah. I see the point. I mean, this, this property is so massive, it's-
But if people go skating there, you know, that-
You don't want to skate on that place.
No, I don't think so. No.
Yeah. But if they did and they got hurt, now the HOA has an issue.
Correct. Right. So that's something that, you know, again, I've tossed back and forth and definitely looking for ideas, because I, I, you know, that's one of those, the HOA has been a, always a, it's always been a struggle, you know, and, and how to deal with that.
To conservation.
Deed into conservation.
I've lived in an HOA with 18 houses. Five families have already moved. Didn't get along.
Oh, Tohannet Pond was an absolute train wreck.
Yeah, that's right here.
Absolute train wreck.
Yeah.
I would, I told my wife, I will never buy a piece of property that has an HOA attached to it ever again.
Some people don't want to pay the fees, and they don't realize that that's going for taxes and insurance, because you need insurance. Someone gets turned out there driving their ATV.
The fees, the fee, when it comes to the fees, that neighborhood, like Peter said, you're talking 8, $900,000 houses. Fees were $125 a month. They were for nothing. It was the crazy people running it. That was what the problem was.
Design review and-
Oh, my God. Please.
I know, yeah. But that's, yeah. So that's what we're looking, and definitely open for ideas. You know, one part of me says, well, you know, if we do something for the, the town, I definitely wouldn't mind doing something nice for the town to be able to go and do, and walking trails. I mean, that, that's actually, it's beautiful back there. So I just have to see logistically, how do you drive into a subdivision? And then-
Yeah, well, and-
You know, how do you, people driving by your house, and what happens?
Maybe you don't have them driving into the subdivision. If you could figure out a way to maybe make use of this and, and not, I'm not saying make that where you drive in, that's where you walk in. You know, they, they put the parking out here somewhere or something.
Are you, alluding to, I think, the south entrance essentially?
Yeah.
Is that what, yeah, I see that as well.
And, and don't have the public come into the neighborhood at all.
To allow a, a walking path from there, which is, there is actually a walk, you can actually walk down that path.
Yeah.
We can incorporate that if we, you know, we decide to, to go, because obviously the homeowner association, whether we do a conservation restriction, give down, that's, you know, towards the end of the, when we decide what your thoughts, but definitely a consideration. And the quicker we can get this approved.
So I have, I have two, two questions at least. The first question is, are there opportunities for affordable units?
Are there opportunities such as?
Affordable housing units. 10% affordable housing units.
We're not proposing a 40B.
I'm, no, no, not a 40B, but-
So we can increase the unit count by 10%?
Well, I'm saying, when we do developments, we should look for opportunities to include affordable housing. I'm asking, is there, can you consider that? Is there an opportunity? We don't have an inclusionary bylaw yet, but-
Well, in, in that same vein, I would say that it bears looking at what the AMI is for Wareham, which is, the last time I was working on a project like that-
It's pretty high.
It was the Boston AMI.
It is, it is the Boston AMI.
So the numbers for affordable housing might be commensurate with what you're planning anyway.
And we're looking at, and again, I mean, you're looking at, to build a home these days, it's almost 200 bucks a square foot. So an 1,800 square foot with a two-car garage, you're looking at that's 2,200, you're at 440,000 just to build the home. And these homes I envision are 599.
Yeah.
So there's not a lot of, there's not a lot, it's crazy.
You're, you're doing really well to build a 200 a foot.
Well, that's, I, you, you would need to. And that's, and that's a-
And that's, even that, that's tough.
Anyway, it was a request that you examine the opportunity.
Absolutely. And, and I have no problem. That's what I pride myself on building, you know, I'm not gonna call them affordable houses, but I try to build them affordable.
But I'm, I'm talking about-
That's what I personally try.
Deed restricted affordable housing.
And one of the other things we are gonna definitely do, because it is a cluster, is we're, we're gonna do a, a denitification system on every, on every, on every lot. So we're, we're okay with the condition to that effect. So it's environmentally friendly, yeah, environmentally friendly septic system on every single lot. So we're, we're, we're okay with that as well. You know, it adds 10 grand per lot, just doing that. You know, so that's, but that's, in, in the, in the sense of being environmentally friendly cluster.
You, you don't want to kill the pond, because there are otters that live in that pond.
There's what, otters?
Otters.
Oh, boy.
Think I'm shitting. Look at the old, old plan when we did it. And I said that Charlie Rowley did the same thing, almost fell off his chair. In the river otters, they traverse back and forth on the stream on the south end of this property. And they were gonna put a culvert so they can go. We had a biologist come in. He come back, told Charlie, yeah, there are otters, there's a family there. Charlie goes.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I know the water rights do have, Eagle Hole does have some south water rights, that culvert down there.
That, that's a problem. Okay? That, that's a man-made pond. Eagle Hole only could pump out of there in emergency uses only.
Yep.
When LaRusso bought that property, it was a sweetheart deal. There is a pipe that goes underneath below the surface, so they have a manhole on the other side, which is totally illegal. He's, he's not paying for water use.
All right. Good enough.
You know, I, I don't think that's right. It's not for the people.
I just saw some language in a deed that said that he had, he had water rights. I think he can't throw on a certain elevation.
Yeah, couldn't go below a certain elevation.
Only, only he, he only can, he has to apply for a permit as a hardship. You know, because they had a pump on there, they can't put a permanent pump on that property. That's what the state says.
Thank you.
Another question through you to, to Mr. Buckland. Process question. One, one approach that the applicant has discussed is getting a variance on front yard setback, which would send them to the ZBA. Would that then become an instance of where the ZBA does the variance, site plan review, special permit, cluster development, or it would come back to us after the variance?
It would come back to you, since there's no option for the, it's just, the options are just under site plan review, not for the cluster subdivision, which is a special permit.
But they, they, they can be a special permit granting authority.
Yeah, but they're not in this case for, under the, under the site plan review authority.
Question.
Oh, because the, the current bylaw still has them tightly conjoined.
Right.
Okay.
And we, we wouldn't attempt to go to the ZBA until after we got an approval from this board, because like I said-
No, no, no. I'm, I'm just trying to understand the, because we just did one where the variance and the site plan review and special permit are going. But this is because it would be a cluster development.
Right.
As opposed to, okay. All right. That was my other, just a process question.
No worries. Yeah, it's considered a subdivision, and then special permit is the allowance of the cluster.
Right.
Sam?
I hate HOAs.
Well, and they dissolve. They get, they get tired, they-
Somebody's gonna say, well, I can put something here, like a solar array. These people are gonna be for it, these people are gonna be against it.
Yeah. Well, that's, that just strengthens Jane's suggestion about setting aside for conservation. It just takes all of that out of-
So we got, we got the land trust here, so they, they should descend upon you.
You should be like this right now.
I fully expect a phone call tomorrow.
Gorgeous pond.
Hmm?
It's a gorgeous pond.
Yep.
I'd be interested in going out for a field trip.
No, I'm, uh-
Yeah. On a nice, on a nice warm day, we can bring our kayaks.
Yeah.
There's areas here concerned though, John. On the south end of the pond, it's almost like quicksand, the shallow parts.
Good reason to not put it in the HOA.
We spoke about that. They were talking about having a boathouse there and this and that. There's structures under, underwater that are, in there. It's not a place to swim.
Yeah.
And it is deep. Good fishing though. It is deep.
Very good fishing.
Yeah.
Okay.
There are people that camp out in the woods up there quite a bit. Like I said, Walcott, he was tough. He kept everybody in line, or he tried to.
Yeah, we saw a big trash, a 55 gallon drum, trashing it, you know, chia. In a kayak. Yeah. Not sure who's using it, but that's what you see there right now.
All right. Very cool.
Yeah. So if you want to set, we're planning to file in the plans, but, you know, you can wait till after we file or anytime. Just reach out to us if you'd like to, to go walk the site. You know, it's, it's probably good that somebody accompanying you, just because it's, you get lost, you know. But there is one, there is one path that just basically goes straight around the whole entire pond. It's actually really, really nice. I took Peter, I took him an hour, ended up being a two and a half hour walk, to be honest.
Well, he's old, he's old and decrepit.
Yeah.
How do I get there if we want to walk it?
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna let them, but they can come up afterwards.
Go down Wishbone, Wishbone Way. You see Wishbone right there?
Okay.
You can actually park on Wishbone.
Good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, cool. This is good. I, I hope we can do more of this.
It helps us, because then we, you know, we-
Well, it saves you a ton of money.
And time and-
And we can start thinking about, you know, the homeowner, what your feelings are towards homeowner association. That's good. So now we can start thinking about that and how, you know, now develop, incorporate that into our plans. I mean, that's, yeah, we, you know, as engineers, we really don't like doing things over and over again. You know, we really don't like-
Doesn't suit anybody's best interests.
No clients are yelling at you to get it done as soon as possible, you know. Thank you very much.
All right, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
You thought I was gonna ignore you, didn't you?
We're not here with the land trust. This has nothing to do with the land trust.
Okay. Nancy McHale, Farring Hill Road. I was at those 2010 meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And a couple of questions that I would have for the proponent on this, and things that had come up at that point in time, was if the old industrial site that was there is going to be removed, who's got access to those old rail lines? It's an attractive nuisance. And it was, I think, part of the reason that it kind of fell through the wayside was access, that there was difficulty with any kind of fire access. But they may or may not have adjusted some of those, those issues.
I can give these out, right?
Yeah.
If you want. The, the plans that they're proposing substantially more compact than the original set of plans, so that might address some of your concern.
Okay. And then you want to-
The, the other thing was, it was a huge liability issue with that water, because apparently the way that the edges on that water are, and we were out there, the land trust did go out and look at that site. The edges of that pond, they had wanted, they were proposing housing development. And I guess there's rules about the slope of a pond has to be such and such that if somebody fell in, they can get out. This failed.
Yep. Well, if you look at the original design, the houses are right on the pond.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the revised design is not anywhere near the pond.
So it's still then an attractive nuisance. If someone falls in, they keep-
Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's an attractive nuisance today. Nothing's gonna change.
Right, right. But if, but if you're looking for the HOA to own that, or for any conservation organization or the town to own that.
We've turned properties down for similar reasons, or-
It's good to know.
We have. And we've had properties offered very reasonably, and they were full of contamination. It's like, no, that's part of our due diligence. Thank you, but no, thank you. We don't want that.
This was an old sand quarry? Is that what it is?
Yes.
So it, it probably goes straight down.
What they had was a barge out there, and they sucked it up with a barge. They didn't do it mechanically, they sucked it mechanically. They used to come up the train line, and then when that kind of went to the belly, they carried trucks for years. Foundry sand, sandblasting sand. It's like sugar.
Yep.
And on, like I said, on this end here, where, where the building was, you walk out there, it's like quicksand. I mean, you're just sinking it, because there's no body to the sand. And it's probably 45, 50 feet deep in the middle.
Yeah.
And there's old equipment in the pond.
Yeah, so none of that came through on the drawings.
We did knock down a building in the big conveyor system.
We went, we walked all around, you know, yeah, it was beautiful. But, whoa.
It, it's, it's an, it's a great illustration of the pine barrens regenerating themselves, because it's just amazing out there. It really is. But it also comes with huge dangers. And we just wanted to say something so that you guys would be aware of what the public comment was back then.
Back then.
Yeah.
So your, your opinion, your opinion is then, if we approach them about segregating that big chunk of land and making it available to the land trust, your opinion is that you wouldn't want it?
My opinion is that at this point, I don't have enough information to make an opinion, and it is not up to me.
No, I'm just asking for, I mean, you know a whole lot more about obtaining land than I do.
Yeah. I would, I would say that there would have to be certain contingencies. There's, there's got to be some way to make that pond inaccessible to the people that you're opening up the trails to.
It's, that site is also an example of sand mining.
And what the repercussions are.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the unintended consequences. And I have-
There's a teaching moment. I have no idea if-
It's, it's worth going out there. Definitely go out.
It's absolutely beautiful.
I've been there many, many times. It's gorgeous. It's a gorgeous piece of property. Great fishing, great hunting.
So, but we need to come up with a way to safely make this conservation.
Yeah, yeah.
So that nobody assumes the liability unknowingly.
Right, exactly.
That, again, that's why you have to do due diligence. It's part of when you go out to look at the property, you know, do a 21E. Oops, it's contaminated. No, we're, we're not gonna take that liability on.
I mean, we could always, if, if donating conservation land is not an option, for whatever reason, we could all, could, could we ask them to segregate that land off, retain ownership, but just deed it as, you know, non-buildable, non-developable?
The thing is, if they retain an ownership, they retain the liability.
Yeah, I understand that. Somebody's gonna end up with the liability.
You're gonna have a neighborhood there, kid's gonna go outside and play. That's dangerous.
Who owns this land now?
LaRusso Corporation.
So they're managing the liability now?
Well, it, it's all private. You're not supposed to be in there.
Or not.
Wally Walcott, the entrance where they're proposing coming in, used to belong to Walcott. And he patrolled that area and tried to keep the people out there as much as he could. And-
But what's the difference if someone trespasses while LaRusso owns it? Or if someone trespasses while the-
Somebody drowns, they're gonna get sued, you know. But if you put a neighborhood there, you're, you're making the temptation even greater.
Oh, absolutely. Especially the homes that, that buffer it.
With kids.
That plan looks like it's a glorified Shangri-La shores. You know, you know, diamond, you know, postage stock, postage-sized lots. They got the, the pond and the river down there, but this is 10 times worse, because here we go again, it's a straight hole. If you fell in, you got no cliff to grab on.
To climb out.
Because you're just gonna slip right down that bank.
Yeah.
You're only gonna grab onto sand. It's not gonna, can't grab onto anything.
Not consistent to it.
No. And, and I don't, I don't know if it's even possible to fill that sand hole in yet. I mean, I have-
There's nobody that's gonna do that. That, that property will stay undeveloped until That, that property will stay undeveloped until the end of time, if that was a condition.
I, I will say that one of the, the people that we had consulted with and had gone out to look for it was, is involved with land acquisition for the Department of Fish and Game. And she was like, that's, nope, this is where we got the information that they had looked at all of that about that, that sand pit.
Well, that's good information. Yeah, 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 okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Things the drawings don't convey.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, so, this one here, that's the original. And then that's the proposed. All righty?
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it, and appreciate the courtesy of you.
Oh yeah, of course, I'm not Hi.
Would you be willing to let me to come up to the microphone?
Is it okay? All right.
Good.
Tricia Wertz, speaking for Tricia Wertz, the citizen. What I saw in this meeting tonight is not you folks specifically, but this is a public meeting, somebody came in to present and even just talk through a plan. No plan, nothing was put out for any of the public here who could watch and follow along, nor was it advertised or listed on the, listed on the agenda. And I'm thinking that there's gonna be some pushback about that, so
Okay, thanks for your input.
You're welcome.
We've been, we've been advocating this for years.
This way.
Where, with an informal discussion on a proposed plan that hasn't entered the application process yet.
And Mike, I think that's great, but as long as this is a public meeting, you know
Then the folks, when, when, when this developer goes through the process, submits his plan, pays his money, and comes to us as a public hearing, then the public will be
So one of, one of the things that might be helpful for the public is to say, we, the planning board, are looking at adding a different, an additional portion to our agenda. We may be talking to potential developers about plans that may be happening sometime. Just let the public know that this is, there's a reason for this happening when they don't see anything on the agenda. That's all I'm saying, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying, educate the public, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next up, continued public hearings. Discussion with possible vote, proposed adding design guidelines in WV1R District to Planning Board Rules and Regulations. Is this yours?
I guess.
I'm sorry? Absolutely. Five-minute break?
Sounds like a plan.
Geez, usually it's me.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of dangerous issues on that, on that site.
But the, the danger doesn't change. It's dangerous today, it's gonna be dangerous a year from now.
The thing is, makes, what makes me nervous is, if you put affordable housing, you're gonna have kids.
Yeah.
And, you know, I wouldn't want to live in a neighborhood and have little kids. I couldn't sleep at night. It'll keep some from wandering off a little bit, kids do that.
Yep, well, kids are attracted to water.
Sure, sure. And it's, like I said, it's a dangerous place. And I know, like I said, when I say quicksand, it's nasty on this side here, where it's shallow.
Yeah.
You know, big pump, whatever, run in there. The sand was so fine, when they come out with the trucks, they have a right-of-way through Square Island Road.
One, one of the people that owned quite a little road, they didn't want to put out of Square Island Road, because when you get way in there, a couple of banks that you go across, they didn't want to deal with the wetlands. So that's why they had to fly a hand in common road. On every way until, it was almost approved, says, uh, he's in Square Island Road, they have a right to pass the repass. They went down, they went to prison, do demolition, he puts his hand up. So they didn't want, they didn't want a fight with it, so they bought the right of way to the outside, so they could get in there. But, um, three other trucks were coming in, because we had to wax the tailgates. She was seeing, it was a mouth of twister, it was dry, it was like sugar.
No kidding.
Burr!
You know what, this is a first.
You wanna turn down the AC?
Fine. I think putting in less infrastructure is probably a good thing for the town, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I kinda like the idea of clusters, you know, and leaving good space between.
I think it's great.
Yeah, it's just making it work, and, and I, I had no idea, looking at those drawings, what the, what the quality of that brings, I mean, some of it's beautiful, but some of it's dangerous.
It's like a desert, it, it is a dangerous place.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's my La Russa Corporation, they've been all stuck in Rochester in, uh, fishing, you know, no market.
Yeah.
See, now, what a house is born for right now, in La Russa's project, High Street and Rochester. They in the high sevens now.
Well, what's, it's the same thing. If you take it right in the center, right, you come back, it's High Street.
Yeah.
That's Jolene's Hall go over.
Yeah.
And so you go by the little gully with the rivers by the water, so if you go right in if you go right in the morning, there must be fifty cars dropping kids off, and the buses are lined up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But like I said, I don't know why the La Russa walked away from here, they went for a lot of shit, but it's not feeding on them all.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting.
Turn all the trees down, put a solar plant in there, that's a good idea.
Jesus.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, Charlie, Charlie went ballistic from the chalice, Charlie was laughing. He has no odds in this, I told you the chalice, it rips. They go up and then they go basin up here, and rivers are all connected. And, uh, and the biologists came in and said, yes, there is a family house.
So there are the reference books.
For what, the design?
And the references at the end of this section.
Oh, okay.
No need, no need to reinvent the wheel.
Anything from 025?
What's that?
Any, any word from 025?
No, well, they asked to put it out till the end of the month, to give us more time to talk to energy storage experts, biosafety experts, things like that.
Have we contacted them? Contacted any?
Yes. Okay, folks, we're back. So, as stated, discussion with possible vote, proposed adding design guidelines to the WV1R District to the Planning Board Rules and Regulations.
So
I think we have the right one up on the site now.
I, I'm hoping that at least some people have had a chance to read through this, so that I'm not working as a committee of one entirely.
I have extra copies here if anybody needs one. I got one.
I, I didn't print mine, so if you've got one.
So, the intention here was to come up with guidelines and performance standards that are at least a stepping stone for moving forward, and creating something that is somewhat, somewhat fluid in that we can keep our eyes on it and, and revise as we see fit. But the intention with this essentially first draft is to come up with a, a framework that we can work with moving forward, and one that is as clear as possible. I know that there was some desire for there to be pictures and diagrams and all of that, but I think I've, I, I know I have listed reference materials at the back of the document, which are really great tools to use. The copies of all four of them are right here. And at this point, where I was really sort of operating as a committee of one to put this first draft together, I, I, it's, it's a lot to try and reinvent that wheel, and that seemed like a pointless exercise, and a very time-consuming one.
Well, I, I, I thought we had all agreed at some point that in order to protect the town, we needed to get something
Right.
Out there.
Right.
So reinventing the wheel really wasn't
Was not in the cards. Not in the cards.
Right.
Definitely not time-wise in the cards. So anyway, I, I think this is a fairly straightforward document, that as it says in the beginning, it does not intend to curb creativity, but intends to be sort of a guide to aim, aim applicants or to development that is consistent with
With the vision.
The goals of, of the Wareham Village.
Yep.
So that's my story.
I thought it was a great job.
I thought it was a good story.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt it after we close the public hearing.
Yep. Any other comments? Sherry? Mike? Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this? Okay, so I would
I saw a hand
Oh, I didn't see it.
Yeah, my name is Andy Costello, I'm, I live within the district, the new sub-district, I own a home. We've lived there for approximately fifty years, so we're personally vested in this, as well as our interest in the center of town. And, you know, I applaud you, I mean, they're very good guidelines, I think. I like the emphasis on proportionality and harmony, and the respect for existing buildings that are architecturally interesting, historic. I think that's important. But my one concern is basically how that can be accomplished with sixty-five-foot buildings, and the permitting of sixty-five-foot buildings. And, I mean, it just seems contradictory when we're talking about proportionality and historic considerations for the buildings that exist. My house is located pretty much right behind the pawn shop, essentially. Which sounds like a lousy location, but it's a wonderful location. I can see the river from my front yard, my backyard, from inside the house. It's been a wonderful neighborhood to live in, but I'm looking at the prospect of a sixty-five-foot building abutting my property, and within probably ten feet of my house. And that's very concerning, and so when I went to the height regulations here, I love the concepts and so on, and if they could be adhered to, it'd be wonderful. But I'm just not, I guess I'm a little unsure of how much teeth this is gonna have. And when a developer comes in and is making a case to maximize his profit by going up to that height, as we know the developers will, and this, this is not theoretically, the owner of that pawn shop has already expressed the desire to develop that property and to move his operation to the Santander Bank Building. So that is pretty close to getting to some kind of reality stage. And I'm sure that that developer is gonna ask for a special permit to go to sixty-five feet on that property. This plan talks about setbacks for Main Street, which I think is a good idea, but those setbacks would not help me, because a sixty-five feet will abut my property. Right now, my property kind of overlooks across the street to the fire station, the river, on both sides. And aside from the views, it faces east. The sun rises on one side of that fire station or the other, or directly behind it, from my perspective, depending on the time of year. Sixty-five-foot building is gonna cut out that light completely, coming in from the east. And so, you know, I guess in a way, I'm saying that, you know, when it comes to the height considerations, I'd like to see, you know, some sort of real enforcement power on the part of the planning board. And this, again, is very general, as you said, it looks flexible, but I'm not sure the developers won't take an opportunity, or take advantage of those, that flexibility, obviously, for their own self-interest.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, in theory, I think it's wonderful, I think the concepts are great. It's the application that I'm concerned about, so
Well, I think, if I could
No, go ahead, please.
I share your concern, I, I do. And the sixty-five foot, you mean, it's already in the bylaws, now at fifty-five feet. That, that's the standard for the height.
Fifty.
I mean, fifty, excuse me. Sixty-five feet is only by special permit, which rides with us. And they would have to come up with one hell of a project for us to consider that. The sixty-five foot is it's a tool that's, that's gonna attract, hopefully, some development that's gonna help us revitalize parts of downtown that's, that's sorely needed. It's not gonna be applied everywhere, if it's applied anywhere. Hopefully, you've seen the way that the board kinda peppers developers as they come in here. I think that
I have, and I'm, I'm heartened by that, I'm encouraged by that.
I mean, and we're very
It's very impressive.
We're very, we're very thoughtful about the people that live in town. And, you know, we try to do, we try to get all of the development that happens in town to be done in, in a way that they're good neighbors. We, that's, and that's what I tell every developer that comes before us, just be a good neighbor. That's what we want you, you know, we're all in this together. Don't come in and build and then disappear, and leave us with, with an issue. So when they come before us, we, we push them to do exactly that. And just like when John Churchill was here with his proposed project, you saw what we did with him. You know, we're concerned about X, Y, and Z, we'd really like to see you, you know, do something that's a little bit more thoughtful. That same, that, that same process would be applied to anything that happens downtown. So the sixty-five-foot number is daunting, I get it. But it, it's not something that's gonna happen, like, hey, you wanna build a building? No problem, sixty-five feet, have at it. That's just not the way we're gonna approach it.
Well, that's encouraging, I appreciate that, it really is. And, you know, I mean, time will tell, it sounds, seems to me like it's a very ambitious project in, in general. It seems like, again, we have some wonderful old buildings down there that are architecturally really interesting. On the side of the street, from the pawn shop down, the neighboring building is, I believe, an eighteen hundreds building. Then you've got the laundry, then you have another eighteen hundreds building. Then you've got that very interesting nineteen thirties GAF building, then you've got a post office, depression era. Well, the WPA, our project inside of it.
Yep.
You've got a bank that was built in nineteen twenty-five. So you take a look at all those properties, and I don't know how you work in, again, a large, modern project, and that it's proportional and in harmony
Right.
With what exists now. And that's, you know, and layer on top of that, the considerations for the resiliency plan, and really the encroachment of the ocean that we're all gonna be facing. And it's, it's a squeeze.
Yep.
You know, it really is. And I just, it's hard for me to get my head around how this is gonna work in reality. It really is. It's like a, you know, you talk about the quicksands or the sands out in that pond, that's what this is like. You know, this is like changing sands, and it's like, well, we're gonna have the development down in this section until the, the title studies were done, and that doesn't look developable, so, you know, maybe we'll move it up the other end of town. And all of a sudden, you're taking a look at properties like mine, historic properties, and, you know, I'm just not sure what the feasibility is down the line.
No, it's, it, it's gonna be a, a long, hard road. There's no doubt about that.
Okay, well, well, thank you for listening, I appreciate it, and, you know, thanks for doing this and being watchdogs on this, because I think we're gonna need it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Papalardo, Ferring Hill Road. My concern is what Mr. Costello said. I was wondering how this I was wondering how this fits with the resiliency plan, which I realize is not finalized, but with part of that, like, taking from 219 Main Street, which was a questionable building, and I only know that number because the land trust is on the second floor. But like the old Deacon's Building, that's one of the buildings that they said would not be cost-effective to flood-proof because it's too old and it can't be raised. And then everything beyond that, down to the Narrows, would all get eliminated. So in redeveloping or the design guidelines, so much of it is relative, looking at what's there. So if you're starting from scratch, do you go with what was there? And is the new design guidelines, is there parking under the buildings allowed? I read through it quick, but I can't remember if it was in there.
That's actually the model that.
Isn't there, okay.
Yep.
So that was one of my, when Mr. Costello said that, I thought, well, that's what I was sitting there thinking. Well, how does the resiliency part, because if a whole lot's eliminated, are you looking then at relative what's left or what was or what's across the street? That's all. But.
But I do think that the, all the FEMA requirements are pretty tough anyway.
Okay.
Even right now, right today, in place, there are requirements that you have to meet for FEMA that are, that are pointed at the same thing as the resiliency plan is talking about. Like, you can, you can have parking, you can have storage, and you can have an entrance at below the FEMA-required elevation.
Okay.
You can't do anything else. So a bunch of those buildings along Main Street are non-conforming right now.
Right.
So, and, and some of them are in pretty tough shape. So if they go away and they're empty lots, they've got to meet those FEMA requirements anyway. So the, what this new bylaw that got passed would allow is for somebody to do parking underneath, and it could be that the parking is accessible from Merchant's Way, and it allows you to do sort of this step-back, terraced, landscaped front of the building, but that sort of goes up and gets you up to that.
Magic number.
That level that you've got to be at before you can really build.
Okay.
With parking in underneath, it is not accessed from Main Street. It's accessed from Merchant's Way, which means that it's not so visible from Main Street, which I think is a benefit.
So it would come, it would have to follow the FEMA rules first in regards to elevation and all of that. And then design guidelines by what was, because it's like relative. What was there, what the building across the street is or what's next door, so that it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb, I guess you would say.
Well, the design guidelines are aiming people to pay attention to the context. Pay attention to the whole village. Don't, don't just say, I'm going to build a building and I'm not going to pay any attention to who's around me.
Get all in.
Yeah.
There'll be no glass skyscraper.
Oh, that's good.
No reflective glass.
Right. It'll be, it'll be something that is going to complement the existing buildings on Main Street.
I love old Main Streets and old downtowns. And watching so many of them die, it's horrible.
Well, that's, that's the intent, is we're going to try to stop it from dying. I mean, right now, it's still a very cool place.
It is.
You know, I go down Main Street a dozen times a day. I love it down there. And to that gentleman's point, when he was naming all the buildings, I love that bank building that's empty right now.
Oh, I do, too.
I mean, if I had a couple of nickels to run together, I would have high-end luxury condos inside that thing before you could do that. Outside of the building, look exactly the way it is. So there's tons, there's tons of opportunity for downtown. And that's the whole idea behind the design standards, is to make sure that as that redevelopment takes place, that it takes place thoughtfully and that the buildings complement the town and not make it look like a eyesore.
Yeah, just where, you know, some of the, where it's not required, but it's, I understand you don't want to scare developers away, but, you know, not required, but it's encouraged and.
Well, and some of that language is, as I said, and you just reiterated, that it's to not cut off creativity. You might be surprised what people can come up with, that, you know, you say, no neon. Well, there's some really beautiful neon out there.
Yep.
You don't want, like, off-the-shelf, crummy neon with half the letters that aren't working. But there is some really beautiful art neon. So that's why it says it's not generally encouraged, but we're open-minded.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Annie Hayes is on the line. Wants, has her hand raised.
Hi, Annie.
Hi, everybody. I can't figure out my videos, so you're going to be spared my face. Lots of things to say, but I thought that conversation with Mr. Churchill was great. And I second the comment you made about, that's, that's one of the goals, is to have that open-ended conversation. And it really, it got to the point of safety, which was also great. You know, maybe there's a way of floating solar on the pond and then, you know, putting a fence around it, I don't know. But you get to places that are creative by having those kinds of conversations. One of the things that I did, because I think it, I thought it was great comments from Mr. Costello and Kathy and Jane, what a good job you did. And one of the things that you're putting things in writing did was to really bring out other questions that are there, such as the village, to expand the unique and diverse small business culture by encouraging support both of and by the community. One of the things that I did in the last couple of weeks was to, after the last meeting, was to talk to Mr. Kiernan, who had a great many concerns, and one was that he hadn't been notified. Another was to talk to Dominic and Mr. Costello and, you know, get different understandings of their visions. And I had wanted to circulate a letter. I got into a car accident, I'm okay, but, so I didn't get to circulate a flyer to all the businesses or talk to them. But I think that's really important, and I thought that was one of the first goals that was stated when they started to present the idea, the designers. And I'm not sure that that was fulfilled. It seemed like a lot of people who have businesses down there, such as the woman, a young woman who spoke at the town meeting and was very concerned about her dreams being dashed by the proposal. So that's one thing. But I also looked at towns that are successful in being coastal towns. And like, I looked at Camden, Bar Harbor, Newport, Rockport. And the thing that they've done, I mean, they're old towns that have been built, but they built their higher buildings going uphill. So they don't have the issue of, you know, like Mr. Costello was concerned about someone building in front of the uphill residences that then block the light, the view. And, and one of the other things is very noticeable when you try to find comparable communities. I don't see any comparable communities, maybe Jane, you have, where they have large, larger four, five, six-story buildings right up against the water, like the pictures have shown. Because as I'm saying, the ones that I saw, they do just the reverse. The lower ones are down, they're restaurants on pilings, and then the older buildings that get higher, or even the newer buildings that get higher, go up the hill. So it's tiered appropriately. The other thing that's very obvious is that we have such a tiny little ecosystem. Our water is not the Atlantic or a bay or a harbor. It's a tiny little waterway. And to build, you know, a brick six-story, and I know, I appreciate what everybody said, that you're not just going to allow that to plop down. But, you know, that's, to get some volume of residents there, that's a real challenge with such a tiny little, and such a delicate little ecosystem with the train. And then there's the safety issue of the train that we've seen with the, recently, with the older man being, being killed. So a lot to think about. The one thing I'm remembering, and I want to address Ken, was that, Ken, your initial thought, and I think this shifts things, but your initial thought was that banks would be the ones to determine what, in a large degree, what got built because they would be providing or not providing loans. And then there's the issue, like Mr. Warren's saying, he was the bank that I spoke to you about, so, you know, that discredits that to some extent. But if somebody comes in, and we have a bylaw that says you can build up to 65 feet, but you have to have a permit, and you can get a loan, and you're providing all this housing, how does that get curtailed to be something that fits more with your guidelines, Jane?
Yeah, can you, can you rephrase the question?
Okay. Ken said a couple of times, previous to this new set of guidelines, that banks would be controlling, I think I'm saying this right, Ken, banks would be controlling to a great extent what gets built because they would provide the loans or not provide the loans to people who wanted to build. So there would be, you know, some stopgap measure there. If, if somebody comes in, you know, there are plenty of big scheme builders, like the Notice Group folks, who could come readily into Wareham and say, hey, you know, 65 feet, I can put a lot of units, make a lot of money, whatever. And the bank would give them a loan. How do you, how do your guidelines steer them to something that we could, I mean, like the Costellos and I and Kathy and you all could agree to being appropriate or fitting into your well-written guidelines about the whole environment and what building is next door and all of that? How do you, how do you slow that vision down that developers are going to have, could have?
Well, in my mind, the design guidelines get applied even-handedly. Doesn't matter who the applicant is and where their funding is coming from. But I do think that you have a good point, that it may be the bigger developers who would be the ones who might look to do a bigger building. I think that the Wareham Downtown has suffered from a bit of neglect in many instances, not all for sure, but in many instances. And I think it's because development there is very difficult. So I think that freeing this up a little bit so that development is possible on those sites where some of the derelict buildings are, is what's going to happen if we're going to develop Main Street at all. So, but I stand by my hope that these design guidelines get, get applied to applicants' projects even-handedly, that even if it's a big developer, they will be held to the same standard as a small developer. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, it does, as far as your intent, but I'm not quite sure, you know, when, when your idea and the developer's ideas, saying that the bylaw says they can do this, and it passes the FEMA, and it does this and this, I'm not sure how, exactly how that works in restricting.
For starters, Annie, the bylaw doesn't tell them they can have, build the 65 feet. It tells them that 65 feet's available with a special permit that's granted by this board, so it's not a foregone conclusion.
Right.
Want to, and to build on the explanation that Jane provided, one of the challenges that any board, the planning board over the next few years, will face is the idea that Jane is quite right to say, that the building needs to be harmonious with the environment. The problem that any board will face is the first building. It's going to be hard to, because it's nothing to be harmonious with yet. So you've got to envision and keep in your, the goal, you know, the eyes on the prize, to quote a famous person. So it's got to be a lot of collaboration, a lot of discussion, a lot of input from the community as these development projects come forward in the early stages. Once we've got four or five projects built, that, that vision will be easier to see, and it will begin to take shape, and it will be easier to say, no, look at, look at the building next to you. That's, but the first building is going to be hard.
The first building is going to be hard. And I think that design guidelines can run the gamut from nothing to incredibly restrictive and onerous and, and.
You'll never get a developer.
If they're too onerous and you've got a struggling village, you're not going to attract somebody to develop or make improvements or do anything. So I think they've got a, the design guidelines have to stay a little bit open, and we just have to be extremely vigilant for this first project and get some momentum going. And, and then, you know, we, this is why these are, this is part of the rules and regulations, what we're proposing here, so that we have the ability to.
To adjust.
To adjust it quickly and readily. So I think that, again, we're just going to have to be really on our toes for that first project. And this is, this is our first attempt. We're, we're trying to stand on our toes here and, and be on top of things, so. Yeah.
Anybody else on the line?
No, nobody else.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the.
No, I was asking her, hold on for a second. You were speaking.
Through you to the, to the director of planning. Mr. Buckland, one way that we could achieve this vision for the first project or projects is to attract the right developer with the right project. Is there someone in the town who's tasked with marketing downtown? Is that a redevelopment authority activity? Is somebody outselling this concept? Selling. I'm probably overstating.
The only, the only agency of the, of the town that gets closest to that is the Redevelopment Authority.
So.
And they have a, the Redevelopment Authority has a four-pronged economic development strategy that includes the downtown redevelopment. So it's a goal of the Redevelopment Authority to see that happen.
Yeah, so we should encourage that, that activity to attack, attract a friendly project and a friendly developer for this first project, if possible.
I think we actually have a friendly developer in Danny Warren right now, and working on the project that he's working on, which is a bookend kind of project, is going to make a difference in the downtown, too.
Yeah, well, we haven't seen that yet, but that's good. That's good. So we have to hope that we get somebody we can work with.
And we have grant money available to attract a developer?
Yeah, we do have some grant money available. And we have, we have a project that has some amenities we can, we can put on in the downtown area that will make it attractive as well, too.
Right. So if we attract a developer to make a project or to build a project who's receiving available grant money, he's going to be more pliable to our, to our vision for keeping the buildings aesthetically accurate to the downtown district, which will help.
Or she.
Or she, excuse me. They, them. Okay. So you wanted to speak? This will be our last speaker, then I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we want to consider adopting these before you close the public hearing? Oh, close the public hearing. Never mind, stop. I thought you said adjourned.
Stop the presses.
I heard you adjourned, but that's not what you said.
I think there are some raised hands on two, at least one.
Thank you.
All right, while we have a young lady at the table, we'll, we'll talk with her first.
Okay. Nancy McHale, Fairing Hill. I hear two different issues happening, and maybe there's a way to marry them, so to speak. One is that on page two, it says that all applications for the site plan review shall include the form entitled "Application for Design Review," which means that your thought of having the developer come to you first and say, "This is what we think we're doing. How, what, what do you think of it?" Which was what Mr. Churchill did this, this afternoon, or this evening. That isn't going to happen in this scenario. They're already going to come here with a site plan.
No.
No, it's a whole plan.
That's the whole intent of that, that statement, is to come forward with your conceptual idea first, let's talk through it, and then...
Application for Design Review, not Application for Site Plan Review.
It says, "Applications for Site Plan Review Shall Include the Form Entitled 'Application.'"
Okay, so we should adjust that, then.
So, so it looks like they're coming to you at the same time.
Yeah.
Saying, "Hey, here's, here's my whole plan. I've got my 55-foot building with my glass front, and what do you think of it?"
And, and at that point, we're going to say, "It doesn't look good. We need to go back to this." But I see, I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so, so if they, if you encourage them to come here first with their conceptual plan, and then for, you know, the application for design review. Okay, we're going to build a 55-foot building on the hill with wood clapboard and blah, 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 blah.
We take five, rewrite this sentence.
Well, and again, I think, I, I think there's, there's something being lost in translation here, all right? What we're trying to adopt is going to go into the rules and the regulations, which means, say we missed this tonight, and it was brought up tomorrow. The board has the authority to go in and change it. Doesn't have to go before town meeting, doesn't have to be voted on, it's a simple correction. Right now, we have this.
Oh, I, I get that, I totally get that.
Well, that's what we're trying to accomplish, and I think what we're doing is, is, which, we're trying to write a, we're trying to write a book on how to fry an egg, and the book's already this thick. Let, let...
But, but you can boil water and, and, and do that first.
Which is what we're trying to...
And then put your egg in it, and you get a poached egg, and you're all good.
Right, but we got to boil, we got to put the water on the stove.
Okay, I get that, I'm not trying to be argumentative.
Well, let's put the water on the stove!
I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to say, if you have, encouraged them to do the, the application for design review first, I can...
I understand that 100%.
Okay.
So, and I guarantee you, as diligent as Jane is and as smart as Jane is, if you read that document, word for word, front to back, you'd probably find another small little thing that needs to be corrected. And we can correct it.
I, which...
But we got to get past that.
Jane has her hand raised.
If we replace the words "include the form entitled," to be preceded by submission of an, I'll read you the sentence with that change.
However you decide to, to tweak the document, which is a living document, and I, and I love living documents, so thank you for taking that into consideration. The only other thing I would wonder about is, on rooftops, are you looking at solar at all?
If we did not suggest it, we should, but...
That can be in the next revision.
That can be in the next round.
Right, yeah, right now, I think, for me, anyway, I'm more concerned on what gets built and what you have to look at, more so than if there's a set of panels on the roof.
It, it can all work together.
Yes, and in the next revision, it very well might.
Shall I read that sentence with those words changed? All applications for site plan review in the WV1R sub-district shall be preceded by submission of an application for design review.
Thank you, and that design review could now be a new agenda item for you.
And just, just a comment to build on this, and again, these are the rules and regulations. With the revised Article 15, we're going to codify design review, and it will be more than...
Just this.
Well, you know, what Mr. Churchill did today, that was not a design review.
No, that was not, no.
That was just an informal...
That was informal.
Well, I didn't want the audience to walk away thinking, "Oh, we just conducted a design review."
No.
That...
That was completely informal.
That was, yeah, just a concept discussion. The design review will be a formal process. And it needs to be defined, we'll define design review, but...
Yeah.
Right now, the fear is, we have nothing, and somebody could come in tomorrow.
Exactly.
And...
So there was...
And take advantage.
There was a copy, there was the text of the application, did that get into the...
I didn't see the application.
I have copies here, if you want some.
Yeah, if you could hand those around. Oh, and there's one question in this that did not get answered, under performance standards, transit-oriented design.
Yeah, it, it's not a state mandate.
Okay, so take the words.
That comes out.
Okay.
Jim Menese is online, had his hand up as well.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing me, Jim Menese, Cranberry Highway. Interesting conversations this evening related to this and the previous, I guess, discussion you had on a separate issue. My, my concern or questions are, wouldn't the design guidelines be more appropriately applied to Article 7 of the zoning bylaws, where the rest of them are? Because as, as I see it right now, rules and regulations, are they under the subdivision of land?
No, they're under the special permit allowances of the state law.
Okay, so it's under special permit, I'll, I'll review that. But I do believe that the design guidelines belong with the rest of them in the zoning bylaws, and that's where, I believe, it, it should be appropriately placed. Thank you.
I think after the, we've, we've matured these design guidelines and performance standards, maybe that's appropriate to put them into the zoning bylaw at that, at some time in the future. But at this time, and we're still working on them and want to have flexibility in creating them, I think it's appropriate that they be rules and regulations at this time.
Where we can act on them more flexible, absolutely.
Well, that's, that's taken into consideration, but it should have been taken into consideration before you approved zoning changes related to it. So as you move forward, consider that. I, I have no questions or concerns with the actual language, I didn't really have a lot of time to review it, but it's just where it's more appropriately placed, and I believe it should be under Article 7. Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, no more hands?
Annie Hayes has her hand up again.
Annie Hayes has already spoken. Anyway, this is your second round, I'm going to give you two minutes, max.
I will take one minute. I have been at charrettes where people talk about, in planning, such as we're doing now, they talk about what the community wants. And when I think about what I want for downtown, I want the bank, I want the post office, I want a restaurant, but, but what do we want? And then some communities direct their inquiries, like you were talking about, you know, the marketing thing, to, they direct it towards what they're interested in having, so that is a livable, a livable community for residents. Last thought, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Ken? No, nobody else.
Okay, I would entertain...
Motion closed, Harry.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carl Schultz, all in favor of closing the public hearing on the design guidelines for WV1R district. Sherri?
Aye, with the understanding that we're talking about the design guidelines as modified by Jane just a few minutes ago.
That is correct, I'm sorry for not putting that in, but yes, design guidelines as amended by Jane in this hearing. So to reiterate the motion, the motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carl Schultz. So Sherri, with that said?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, meeting, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion that we adopt. Wait a minute, I got to read the title again. Wareham Village Reinvestment Sub-District Design Guidelines and Performance Standards, Rules and Regulations of the Wareham Planning Board, dated 18 May 2023, as revised, this date, as rules and regulations for the board.
We have a second, we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor, Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane, this will be filed with the town clerk tomorrow after the modification of the document.
So there's two modifications, that's, that...
The state mandate and the...
Comes out, and then that one sentence.
That one sentence correction. Do we have to give, do we have to give editorial credit? No, okay.
And as we move forward, we, as you said...
Yeah, well, that's the whole idea, is, you know...
We have to apply it and see what happens.
Yeah.
Just getting it in place is a huge jump forward for us. Uh, motion? To adjourn, we have a motion by Sam Corbett to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Mike? We have a second by Mike Baptiste, all in favor, Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Come on, I know you want to stay.
I like, I like hanging out with you guys. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, everybody.